Ally Shawn, is he here?
John Kelly, present.
Larry Luzo, present.
Kim Bealan, present.
Christopher Mead, present.
UG Foley, present.
Great. So the first item on the agenda is to vote on the minutes of the October 16th Planning Board Meeting.
Move to approve.
Good. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and I will abstain, I was not here. The next item on the agenda is a new business item, the Planning Board Meeting Calendar for 2025. So it's in our packet, the proposed dates?
Yep. Madam Chair, through you to the Board, the Department has provided the lineup for the 2025 calendar year. As we had last year, we did move for one meeting between July and August. That resulted in pushing the June meeting back a month and the August meeting up a month to kind of close some of the gap distance in there. But other than the June and the August meeting, you know, it's the third Wednesdays of each of the months. We check this against holidays. So this would be the recommended calendar.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions about it? So do we need a motion to approve it?
We would, yes.
Okay.
Motion to approve the 2025 Planning Board Meeting for the third Wednesday of the month?
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
The first item on the agenda is a continued public hearing for 50 Cushing Street. This is Planning Board Case Number 2024-07. We did receive correspondence from Attorney Patrick Foley. He's not here. I'll just read it for the record. Dear Mr. Fatsies, as you may know, this office represents 50 Cushing Street LLC with regards for their application for site plan approval for adding two townhouse-style units to the existing single-family home. On behalf of the applicant, please accept this letter as a withdrawal of the application. Sincerely, Patrick Foley. Do we need a motion to approve?
Or a motion to accept?
To accept the withdrawal.
Yeah.
Without prejudice.
So move, a motion to accept without prejudice.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, we'll give that to Member Kelly and Member Luzo. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. And that is unanimous. Okay. Next on the agenda is also a continued special permit application, 56 to 74 and 126 Granite Street Planning Board Case Number 2024-10. The public hearing was held during the October meeting and it was closed at that time. I would invite Terry Mahoney out. Just want to give some comments about what's happened since then.
Sure, thank you, Madam Chair. For the record, Attorney David Mahoney and I represent the Grossman Companies. We had the public hearing a month ago at your October meeting. The public hearing was closed. Since that time, it's gone out to peer review. We have comments back from the peer reviewers. Our professionals have returned the favor and commented on that. We've had comments from the department heads. Our team of professionals has also commented on those letters that came from the city department heads. We have the entire team here tonight if there are questions from the Board.
Okay, great. Thank you. And I did also want to note that Annalee Johnson submitted comments, correspondence, and that's been added to the file as well. So without further ado, does the Department have a recommendation on this?
Yes, we do, Madam Chair. Through you to the Board. I would add to Attorney Mahoney, the Department did organize a developer and city review team meeting after the last meeting to really expedited, expedite the review process. Sometimes with this, there's a number of back and forths, so we really had sort of one group of back and forth. And the proponent team has answered all of the issues that have been brought up in that review satisfactorily. Towards that end, after consideration of the site plan accompanying documents, in the comments received from city staff and the peer review consultant, the Department recommends the Board approve the site plan review under Quincy Zoning Ordinance Title 17, Section 9.5.1 and 8.3.6. Site plan review and special permits under Section 8.3.2.1, Section 8.3.2.2, and Section 5.1.17, subject to the below-listed special and general conditions. Special Condition 1: The applicant shall obtain all applicable findings, variances, and special permits if needed from the City of Quincy zoning vote of appeal. 2: Applicant shall comply with the City of Quincy Inclusionary Zoning Ordinance, Section 7. The applicant shall submit an IZO application to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Committee prior to the issuance of a building permit. Decision by the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Committee shall be made on the subject property prior to the issuance of a temporary or final occupancy permit. Number 3: Prior to the issuance of an occupancy permit, the applicant shall demonstrate compliance with Section 8.3.9, the Public Art and Placemaking Program, by issuing a report for review and approval by the Planning Director. 4: The applicant shall submit a construction management plan to be filed and approved prior to the issuance of a building permit. This shall include the locations of stockpile indoor staging areas for construction equipment and materials. Applicants shall also address construction period traffic impacts by providing a detailed sequence of construction and addressing any space constraints and detailing how they'll be addressed as construction progresses. 5: The applicant shall reconstruct the sidewalk along the entire property, frontage of Granite Street, Bergen Parkway, and Henan Parkway with a new concrete sidewalk, broom finish with a border and tool joints, and reset or replace granite curbing as specified by the Department of Public Works. Applicants shall provide ADA and AAB-compliant sidewalks and wheelchair ramps at all crosswalks within the site. 6: Prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy for the proposed project, the applicant shall provide a contribution of $26,000 to fund a road safety audit to determine what additional future roadway improvements are feasible to reduce the crash experience along Bergen Parkway. 7: One week prior to any land disturbance activities, the applicant shall conduct an onsite inspection with the City of Quincy Indoor its Designated Representative to observe the erosion controls installed at the site and review the erosion controls anticipated to be employed during construction. 8: The applicant shall obtain a drain permit and stormwater management permit from the Department of Public Works prior to the issuance of a building permit. 9: Prior to the issuance of a building permit, the existing sewer service pipes and water mains shall be inspected with television pre-development in order to check the condition of the system. The television report shall be submitted to the Department of Public Works for assessment. 10: The proposed stormwater system and connection to the drain line shall be inspected with television post-development. Television reports shall be submitted to the Department of Public Works for assessment. 11: The City of Quincy Indoor its Designated Representative shall observe construction of the stormwater management system at the following times. Upon completion of excavation, upon completion of chamber and crushed stone installation, and prior to backfill, the applicant shall provide at least 72 hours' notice for said inspections. 12: Prior to the issuance of an occupancy permit, the applicant shall submit an operation and maintenance plan for the project stormwater system, which shall include the following: Stormwater Management System Owner, the party or parties responsible for operation and maintenance, including how future property owners will be notified of the presence of the stormwater management system and the requirement for proper operation and maintenance; a plan showing snow storage areas and the location of all stormwater BMPs in each treatment train along with the discharge points; an estimated operation and maintenance budget; snow management and identification of any limitation of the use of salt and/or deicing chemicals; inspections shall be conducted by civil engineer or environmental scientist; records of inspections and maintenance shall be up-to-date and available for review and inspection; the maintenance plan shall be recorded at the Norfolk County Registry of Deeds. Special Condition 13: The applicant shall submit an illicit compliance statement to the Engineering Department prior to the discharge of any stormwater to post-construction BMPs. 14: The applicant shall consult with the Quincy Health Department on noise mitigation measures for construction-related noise generating activities to comply with local and state regulations. 15: The applicant shall submit a written rodent control plan to the Quincy Health Department for review and approval prior to any site activity. Said plan must be designed for the duration of the project and include at minimum the following: Name and contact information of a licensed pest control operator to be retained by the project proponent for the duration of the project; scope of the proposed plan for the control of rodents, including number, location, and monitoring frequency of bait stations, as well as the anticipated length of service. 16: The applicant shall develop and submit a written dust control plan to the Quincy Health Department for review and approval prior to any site activity. Said dust control plan is to be implemented during any site activities to ensure compliance with state air quality regulations. 17: Applicants shall install stone or concrete survey monuments to delineate the public right-of-way. The monuments shall be set by a professional land surveyor. 18: Upon completion of construction, the applicant shall submit a report, including certified ASBIL plan, from a professional engineer or surveyor certifying that the stormwater management system has been constructed in accordance with the approved plans. Report should include a certification that the excavations of the proposed system were inspected prior to backfilling. Applicants shall also provide to the city engineer the digital file ASBIL plan showing all utilities, building footprints, reference bonds, and benchmarks defining the total site facilities and rights away, along with the AutoCAD file. The ASBIL plan shall be in Mass. State Plan Coordinate System. The plan should be stamped and signed by a professional land surveyor or professional engineer. Almost there.
Mm-hmm.
Prior to the issuance, number 19: Prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy, a proposed project, the applicant shall submit a final building signage package to the Planning Department for administrative review and approval by the Planning Director. This middle sheet will identify the location, design, and installation of all signs associated with the proposed project and identify any differences from the building signage plans included in the record plans. To the extent the applicant has not yet determined final tenant or other signage at the time of an occupancy permit is granted, such tenants shall be responsible for submitting a proposed retail signage application to the Planning Department for review and approval prior to the submission of a building permit application. 20: Upon completion of the project, the applicant shall submit a stamped affidavit from a registered professional engineer that all utilities, water, sewer, and drain are constructed as designed and no illicit connections are found on the completed project site. That would conclude the Department's recommendation.
Okay, great. Thank you. Does anybody have any questions about that? Nope? Okay. Does anybody have a motion on this application?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion. Just prior to do that, I'd just like to just say one thing to the construction team. I think it's going to be a great project, but when you guys are considering to hire some people from the City of Quincy, that'd be, you know, that'd be good. There's a lot of men and women in the city that would love to work on this project. It's really going to change that corner of the road coming up, so please consider a contractor that can hire the men and women of the City of Quincy. That being said, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the 20 special conditions that Mr. Robbins, Mr. Stevens just read, and that we approve this.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll make that second.
Okay, so that was Member Kelly and Member Foley. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None, so that is unanimous.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. So the next item on the agenda is a new public hearing for 10 Independence Avenue, Planning Board Case Number 2024-13. This public hearing shall be conducted to review the application of Marina Bay Management Services LLC, 500 Victory Road, North Quincy, Mass., 02171, for site plan review under Quincy Zoning Ordinance Title 17, Section 9.5.1, site plan review, and special permit under Section 5.1.17 parking waiver. The applicant proposes the replacement of the existing auto body shop with a four-story, nine-unit condominium building and 18 parking spaces. The proposal will also include structured exterior space and amenity space for the residents, along with professionally-designed drainage controls and landscaping. The property contains 10,973 square feet of land and is located at 10 Independence Avenue. The subject property is located within a Business A zoning district and shown on Assessor's Map, 3033 Lots 33A. Good evening.
Good evening. One second. Good evening. My name is Jeff Toccio. I represent Marina Bay Management. With me is Tom O'Connell, who's with the Client Group. Also, Gabe Crocker and Josh Greener here, they're from Crocker Design. We've got 10 Independence Avenue before you folks this evening, and we've got it up. What I'll do first, just give you an idea of what we're looking at. We're looking at the property, which is to the south on the point, basically where the arrow is, 10 Independence. It's at Abigail Adams Square, in between Independence Avenue, which would be on the left, also Franklin Street, which is on the right. It's currently, has a garage that's been there since 1947, nonconforming with respect to use, nonconforming with respect to dimensional, and is in use today. It's got an automotive use. It was historically a shell station and had two islands, serviced about eight cars at the pumps, and it's got three, three roll-up doors that are there. It's in Business A, and the proposal this evening is for a multifamily residential, which is why we've got the special permit 3.1.4. We've also got the parking waiver, which you're asking for, and then primarily, we're looking at site plan review. We're proposing a nine-unit, 18-bedroom residential building with 18 onsite parking spaces that are on the surface. It was here before. I know that another applicant had put it in before you folks, and we actually came in and we withdrew that. We were contacted by the current applicant, which is Peter O'Connell of Marina Bay, and he asked us to, in effect, withdraw it and then go back to redesigning the project. There's been a history of changes, some evolution in response to some of the neighborhood meetings. The prior team did have some neighborhood meetings, took back various comments. There have been some changes that I'll go through real quickly. And then also, when we had it and we filed, we've met with planning. We've, I had comments from traffic, from engineering, so we've been in a position where we're pulling the information and really working to, to improve, to make different changes. We had a neighborhood meeting, which was last week, at McKay's, which is up, that'll basically be at 2 o'clock, let's say, at the corner of Bradford and then also Franklin. And that was hosted by Councilors Devine and Ash, and we thanked them for that. It was great. We, we took away a lot of various comments. I think we understand some of that. The pressure points, the questions, and what I did for this evening is, a little bit of the presentation, is designed to answer some of those questions. What's interesting, primary, when we come in here, is that Mr. Crocker is the new engineering team. So there was a prior engineering team, and we just recognized some changes that could be made that would allow for the project to move better, just in a better, better position. Changes did occur, and I'll just say generally, materials have changed, and I'll go through some of that in some detail. Also, exterior, we made a lot of improvements to where the parking is. We made improvements to the back of house in how the property actually interacts between the back lot and then some of the common areas, which are on the first floor of the property. Moreover, what I'll do is I'll be showing you folks that the front door was previously proposed to be on Independence Avenue, and there were questions about whether we could line that up to make it more centralized at the apex of the intersection. And I do have some plans that I'll show that to you, and I'll show you what the effect is. And then lastly, in a general sense, the prior, the prior proposal had a basement in it, and it's interesting when you look at the site, you look at where the groundwater readings were, and the interaction of what the proposed basement was with respect to where the slab was for the groundwater. And then also, this is a building with an elevator, and there's a lot of mechanicals that go below this slab in the basement. So the decision was made, it was actually pretty easy. We were having a little bit of a tough time with things, and Mr. O'Connell said, "Do away with the basement," and that solved a lot of problems for us. And I'll go through some of that as well. Looking at the exhibit that I've got, does, Mr. Stevens, do we think this works on that? Or?
Power on the side?
Power on the side.
Green.
All right, so taking the battery door off is not going to help. And is it this one? Is it that one? I'm going to ask Mr. Crocker to figure it out while I do it, and I just, please.
Joe's doing it.
Joe, thank you very much. The first one, if we could go back to the other one, please? It wasn't going ahead. So let's start with the neighborhood. I'm not going to assume that everyone, of course, you all know this, we all know this. I'm not going to assume that you do. Real quickly, again, the property is to the south, it's where the arrow is. It's basically the point, the apex of what we're looking at for the corner, the five-way intersection, which is known as Abigail Adams Square. If we turn around and start going up to, let's say, 10 o'clock, you can see that white structure with the rubber roof around it, that's 1 Independence. So that's Sweeney's Funeral Home. And then if we continue, we go to 12, we're looking at the John Quincy Adams House, and then the John Adams House above that, that's part of the Birthplace Park Service Properties. Coming back, swinging through about, let's say, 2 o'clock, we've got McKay's at 144, 150, which is Franklin Street. And then finally, about 9, excuse me, I say 9, 3 o'clock, is, we've got a very large, tall Queen Anne, which is on 60 Franklin Street. That's a residential use. The reason that we put this up, and I wish this pointer worked, was I wanted to emphasize, one, the geometry of the intersection, it's classic, right? This, this doesn't adhere to any modern requirements with respect to how someone would want to lay out an intersection, but it is what it is. And this has kind of grown up in the neighborhood, and it's gone forward. The neighborhood consists of a mix of residential structures and then other commercial structures. And again, everything has its place and time. If I look at 1 Independence, that's a Queen Anne, Queen Anne architecture, and that was built in the 1890s. Sometimes subsequent, they put the funeral home around it, and that's what you see today. That today, the concept of legally nonconforming uses and then also dimensional criteria, that is legally nonconforming with respect to setbacks on dimensions and then also the use. But again, it's part of the neighborhood, it's a valued piece of the community, but it is what it is, and it kind of defines what this, what this intersection consists of. If we look at the Adams Houses, we're looking at the closest one, the John Quincy Adams, that's classified as a colonial federal. And you'll remember, if you go there, the front door is literally on the sidewalk, there's a big break in the stone wall, which is really unfortunate. Obviously, that was nothing that was, nothing that was original, but it's been there. But that's got a zero, you know, zero setback from the property. We go across to McKay's, who was fine enough to host the, the event for us last week. When we were there, we just could point out very easily, zero setback. So that's nonconforming with respect to dimensions. Similar with 160 Franklin Street, that's nonconforming. And then finally, if we can go to the next one, Joe, the property that we're talking about today, it's the Quincy Auto Tech. And I mentioned before, it is nonconforming in so many aspects. The back of that actually conforms with the shape, the back property line conforms with the shape of the building. If it's got a one-foot setback, you know, that's, that's, you know, that's about it. But it's a product of its time. They divided it around the building. Again, that was, put it in 1947, and it's also today, nonconforming with respect to use. But it's legal, but that is what people see when they actually go there. And, you know, when you're looking at the property, that's what you wind up seeing. It has four curb cuts, and I think it's very interesting to note that the existing condition has, right up front in front of that white minivan, that's an actual curb cut. So that was something that was in use, certainly, when it was the gas station. Also, if you look at where the two cross rocks hit over on the Franklin Street side, the curb cut literally opens directly into the curb openings. All very bad, you know, the design's, you know, really, really horrible. The other two curb cuts, which are on the side, they're a little further back, but they're rather close up to the intersection. So from a queuing standpoint, et cetera, it's really not a good condition, you know, not a good condition. The other piece that I'd like to talk about this, take a look at what it looks like. Whether cars are there or not depends on where somebody parks them. It's got no defined parking, so it's basically an expanse of, I think it's 8,800 square feet of pavement. It's got no onsite drainage whatsoever. Rain hits it, it just goes into the street. The building's about 2,300 square feet in size, and it also has, if you take a look on the left, on the Franklin Street side, it's got an open dumpster, which is there, it's always been there as far as I can remember. And in 2021, it was actually cited by the city for storage of outdoor junk. So it had to go in under the ordinances to basically clean the place up. Joe, if I could go to the next one, please? The top is a view that's next to the John Quincy Adams House coming south down Franklin Street. And when you enter this intersection, that's your focal point. So I'm going to suggest, you may differ, I just, it's an obsolete use. It really degrades the intersection. It really degrades a lot of the surrounding properties around it. Mr. Sweeney's Funeral Home is behind the tree, which is over there on the right. Again, beautiful Queen Anne architecture, it's got the spire. It's just got so many nice, nice properties that are here, that this is far below the standard of, of what is supported by the neighborhood. And I'd suggest that the intersection, the neighborhood deserves a lot better. This is a situation where you've got Mr. O'Connell, private, you know, private developer, looking to invest private dollars in this square, which I would suggest is a great opportunity. And what he seeks to do is shown below. What we've done is, it's basically the rendering, which is dropped down. Unfortunately, the detail of the renderings aren't super great. It's just, it's a, it's a fact. I wish it was, we could get some that were better in the time. But I've got one, which I can show you a little later. What we're looking at, again, is going to be nine units. It's, consists of a ground floor, which is common area, elevator bank, package delivery, it's got some shared space for the residents, et cetera. And again, lobby for all the mail, package deliveries, things of that nature. If you go up one, it's got the first residential floor. It is looking at basically three units there, about 1,300 square feet each. And then as you successively go up, the floor, you know, the floor plates are identical. So it's three units, and they're two-bedroom units, and they're 1,300 square feet each. I will mention that the concept is for condominium use, and that was something that came early. I know that the prior developer had proposed apartments, and one of the questions was whether it could be something that would be condominium ownership. Thinking being that typically condominiums where their owner occupied, it's, it's a lot easier to put together the condominium association, and there's pride of ownership, and that would result in maintaining what would be high-quality building as it goes forward. I believe that the size of this balances the intersection. I'm going to suggest, after many, many years of kind of working with Mass. DOT on intersections like this, that over time, gateway intersections such as this wind up getting upgrades, improvements with respect to some of their geometry. And ultimately, this is an intersection that I believe that supports the building that is proposed, which is here. When you come down Franklin, we see this as a continuation of the investment that is in the neighborhood. You'll know that, you know, 109 Franklin, Dunkin' Donuts recently, there were kind of land swaps purchases to upgrade that entire property. Also, 106 to 108 Franklin is the sixth residential, I believe, with three commercial, and that, that's tucked in over off, I think, North Payne. But you, you're, I won't say lucky, but I think Quincy's success in the neighborhoods is that it's a really well-run place. It's a great place to live, it's a great place for residential occupants, and the proof's in the pudding because private money has been coming in and investing, leading up to this intersection. Mr. O'Connell sees this as the next step, and frankly, a huge step, because instead of just infilling on the way to the intersection, he does not like that garage, right? You, I don't know if you know him, he's a local gentleman. Things like this get his interest, and, you know, it's something he's got to deal with. This is an opportunity to have somebody invest private money in a building going forward that is going to be able to- private money in a building going forward that is going to be able to hopefully replace that garage that exists there today. Joe, if we go to the next one. This is, there's nothing around it. It looks like it was plopped down in a desert or something. So please, please overlook that. Please overlook the BMW on Franklin Street, which is driving on the wrong side of the road. What else? This is, this is an earlier iteration that I had made up to show what were some choices on the, on what the building would look like. So because it's early, I can tell you that the street trees are not shown, the proper sidewalk is not shown, railings, there's some, there's some other elements to this, a little fancy. We've got to speak with historic, and we already have some feedback. So there are some elements to this from an aesthetic point of view that aren't exactly straight-on, but the building is. And the piece, the piece of the building that I would point out that is important from my perspective, first of all, you'll see where the front door is now. So it's under where it says, my eyes are no good, might say, 10 Independence. That's where the front door is now. And the question was, when you're approaching this intersection, can you have the front door be, you know, where it kind of lines up instead of having it was formerly on the side, where you can see a secondary, secondary egress door, which is on Independence Avenue? So that was put in. There were comments that it came up and hugged up towards the corner a little too much. So what we did was, we cantilevered the building above that. So we were able to recess the front door by over five feet, which allows for landscape architect to have plantings put in. It also just kind of gives more airiness and gives more sightlines between Franklin and also Independence. You'll notice that it's gray. Earlier iterations of the building were brick. We went in, we saw some of the public hearings before, and one of the things I heard was, it just looks, the brick, it just looks like a wall. So what we did was, we took a look at it. I looked at the other properties. I mean, we're looking at all the other, you know, the Queen Anne's, they're all clapboarded. And obviously, the Adams Houses, in particular, the John Quincy Adams. I like that kind of putty-ish with the cream, et cetera. So what we did was, we came up with a color palette on a hardy board. So it's basically cementaceous siding, so it looks just like wood. It wears like iron. It lasts a long time. It holds paint great. And it's just really durable. It looks nice. So this has the hardy board planking, which is for the clapboards. As you start to move up, you can see the bays. They're actual bays. There's a, I should also mention, the style of this, because of the roof, it's a Second Empire, so it's called a mansard roof. There are a few of these in the neighborhood up on North Payne, north of North Payne, where there's a coffee shop on the corner. The building that's attached to that is an actual 1890 Second Empire, and that's got bays, which face over onto North Payne Street. So we're able to replicate those. What they do is they give texture. They give interest. They're in different colors. So instead of having something which is, you know, a vanilla box that goes up without features, this place actually has, you know, some articulation. Modern buildings that you see now have a lot of striping with gray vertical, and they change different materials. That's trying to achieve the same thing, but with a more contemporary style. This allows, and it's been around, you know, forever and a day, it allows for vertical interest and texture, and it's more of a traditional architectural style. So the building goes up, you'll notice that from the ground floor up to the tablature, which is the heavy, excuse me, the heavy beginning of the roof, or what people would say, oh, it's like the gutter line. Everything you'll notice with the windows, all the fenestration, it's all a white, or it's either going to be a white, it's going to be a cream. It's basically going to match what that lighter color is. And what that does is that, I won't say it tricks the eye, but it establishes a certain unification for this building up to that heavy tablature, that heavy, heavy line. That heavy line is like 35 feet above the street, and that's very intentional, because when you look at this, your eye goes boom to that, and then above that is basically laid out as a mansard roof. There is a level, a third level of three units, which are up there, which are the same as the preceding floors. So that's, that's a livable floor. But the beauty of a mansard roof is you're allowed to enclose livable space within a roofline or an attic. You'll notice that all of a sudden, the fenestration changes. We don't have the light windows anymore. We've got the dark, the darker, you know, the aluminum, et cetera, so that they, you know, in effect, it's a part of, you know, kind of tricking the eye. They blend in visually up into the roof, so that it's able to be able to lay the building out in a nice style with, you know, various architectural components that allow for a building to go in and be able to support that level, but I'll say camouflaged within the mansard roof. The height of this, as I said, like 35 feet to the tablature, it's 4410 to just that top, that, that light white band. So 4410 is where this winds up hitting when we take a look at it. We can go to the next one, Joe, please. Spinning around, taking a look at how the property lays out, the north or the, the intersection, Abigail Adams Square is right up top of, up top. You can kind of see this thing. It's cone-shaped, super irregular shape. But, you know, it was really good. In 1947, everyone's coming back from the war, and people bought, people bought cars. They needed to drive places. This really worked out well back in the time, to be able to get cars in and out of those, those pump islands. Nowadays, it causes real issues with respect to the usability of the parcel, which we've had to work on, very, you know, very hard work in order to get this to work, to meet the various criteria that you folks are going to look at for your site plan review. What we've got, just, building is up at the top. You can see the grade. That's in effect the first floor. And you can see, if I take a look, a lobby, common room, got storage, mechanical, because we don't have the basement, we have to have mechanicals. So those have to be on the ground level. Package delivery, the elevator, elevator room, and then we've got kind of a public gym, which is stuffed over next to the stairwell. I will mention, some of the early iterations of this plan had some component of residential on the first floor. That, that, there was, that wasn't super well-received. You know, no one wants to walk by, look in, see people. I don't think frankly, anyone, I wouldn't want to live there and look out and wave to my neighbors waiting at the crosswalk. But one of the comments early on was, can you, can you restrict, you know, the residential, get it up? The other thing was, was apparent very early on, that thoughts of using this first floor for commercial use as a mixed-use residential really were highly problematic because of the need to get vehicles off the street and not have anything out on the street parking. That was something that was a very early message, and a lot of the design followed to be able to capture all of the parking, parking on-site. And this basically achieves, achieves that. Talking about the parking first, as I said, it's got nine units, 18 bedrooms. This provides 18 parking spaces, all conforming with respect to size. The aisle conforms with respect to the requirements with, you know, we actually received excellent comments coming back from traffic engineering, a lot of comments. And we went through the iterations. You enter on the Independence outside, and then you exit on the Franklin, Franklin Street side. It fits emergency vehicles. It fits FedEx trucks. It fits, you know, Amazon deliveries. And that was one of the things that we worked with planning on, was that earlier iterations really were, they weren't thought through with respect to the, I call it the back-of-house. And that has to do with, if you take a look at that turquoise car, see the line behind that? The line is where that first residential floor starts. So this parks under a lip of the building, so it's semi-enclosed. Starting from the right on the Independence outside, we were able to cite the bicycle racks, all that, tuck it in much more efficiently. That was a parking space. Obviously, you wouldn't want to use that space and be backing directly into the, into the, you know, the mouth of the inlet, et cetera. So we made a lot of changes. You've got the spaces that start to align until you get down to, there was a change in the handicap, because we needed to have all the van space, which is now incorporated. And then while we were there in putting that in, planning suggested that we make really good changes with respect to the geometry to allow for more size, larger, larger door, enclosed trash in a, in a better way, so that people moving in, you've got to move in a, you know, Batrice.com or whatnot, they actually can get into the place. You move a sofa in there, there's actually room. Everything would be kind of directed towards having that spot where the Amazon can stop, they can run in. We've got the package delivery room, which is right there. So a lot of thought has been put into this to make that back-of-house work. You can see there's a dog park, which is where the bumpout is today for the, for the garage. And then we've got, you know, some planted areas, which are on both Independence and then also on Franklin Street. The street trees that are shown are columnar type of red maples, so trees that in effect don't spread when they grow, but they have a, you know, a nice upright shape to them. We've got boxwood, dogwood. I know there's various U's. London plane, we anticipate that we will get comments, whether it's from you folks, whether it's from engineering with respect to proximity to the street. There are many options that we can put together. Our landscape architect decided that these were the best for this situation. But again, we're open-minded for that. Looking at the sidewalk, this is a big change, big change for this plan, also a big change for this intersection. That is poured concrete sidewalk, but you'll notice the red, that's a two-foot brick paver strip, which is incorporated. And then we're able to drop the tree wells into that. And then, of course, it's got vertical granite curb, which is all the way around. The big change with respect to the sidewalk aesthetic is that if you take a look from School Street, and then go down to Water Street, if you look at the sidewalks, you'll notice the two-foot brick strips. So back in the day, when the city was doing work, people were doing things, they'd say, it's time to replace the sidewalk, and the city would say, that's great. Don't forget the brick strip. And you can see that. So it comes all the way down to water. It goes a little further towards Nam, Nam the Taylor, and then it just dies. And it turns back into, it turns into just, you know, concrete. For whatever reason, that standard kind of disappeared. One of the things that, you know, Mr. O'Connell expressed an interest in, you talked of planning, there was, you know, no one, no one's going to say that's not a good idea, but what, what it does, it begins to establish a design aesthetic for the public spaces, for this intersection, thinking again, that at some point, on some level, there's going to be a push within the city to say, great neighborhood, but that intersection doesn't do it justice, and it's an opportunity to do some, do some upgrades here. So we would suggest that the infusion of public money on one of the corners is a good start. And I think it's, you know, I think it's fitting for this. I'll also say that being a condominium building, it's going to be for-sale condominiums. So the nicer it looks, the nicer environment that it's got, it's just all, you know, it's a virtuous cycle with respect to what you want for the aesthetic and just the quality of what you're putting together. We can go to, now, just to make sure I get everything I did. Super. Joe, if we could go to the next one, please?
This is an exemplar floor plan. So one, you know, the first residential floor, the second one, the third one, they, in effect, all look the same. You know, the central core is the elevator. You see the same stairs, emergency stairs, et cetera. So again, there're two bedrooms, and they're about 1,300 square feet. One might be 13, 13, another might be 12, you know, 97. But the way that they all shake down is they hit a Goldilocks, you know, sweet spot, if you will, on what these folks are kind of hearing, that people are looking for when they're actually buying condominiums in this type of area. And when I say this type of area, you folks all know it. It's T-stations right up Independence Avenue, the bus stops right outside. It's, it's what's happening these days. You know, real estate's very expensive to buy. We've got younger generations that are coming up, and it's work from home. Not a lot of people necessarily have multiple vehicles or even a vehicle. It's interesting. So we've got a real transition to, you know, mass transit. We do have the one car per bedroom, so this place is very amply parked. But the reality is that, you know, one of the attractions here is the proximity of, you know, the public transportation that's available in town. I'm going to go to the next one, Joe, please. The height. This is one of the issues that was, comments from neighbors originally, and it's something that, it's the same height that we're looking at here. So it's something that we looked at. People said, can, you know, can you make it a little shorter? Can you do something different with it? The reality that I'm dealing with is, I need, in order to make this financially viable and to create a residential building as opposed to just selling or renting to another garage, is I need to get the nine units. That's, that's a financial reality that I'm dealing with. We also did away with, with the basement, et cetera. So we're making commitments with respect to sidewalk, et cetera, all plus, plus, plus. One of the things that I need to do in order to make the economics work is to have the three layers of the residential. So I want to be real upfront with you on that. And some of the comments, when I ask people and I say, well, what's wrong with, you know, having the camouflage up at the top? And people look at the Adams Houses, and they say, look how big that is. This is, this is bigger than everything. And the answer that I, you know, my response, it's bigger than what you used to, which is a one-story garage. It's bigger than McKay's and that whole block. Absolutely, they are what they are. But if I look at the other properties that are direct abutters in that intersection, like, go there, walk around, absolutely beautiful 160 Franklin Street, multifamily home. It's got a cupola, and height-wise, 39.7 is the height of that building. 39.7, it shows on the Franklin Street side as one, two, three levels. But actually, if you go in, go to Bradford, you go on to the east side of the house, there's like a half level that's there. Pre-existing non-conforming, it's great. I'm absolutely positive it's a great place to live, because the place is gorgeous. But it is what it is. This is, you know, how many feet? Someone help me with the math. Is it 5, 3? Nope. 5?
Five foot.
All right, we're, we're five, we're five feet taller than that. And that's been there since 1890. Without, you know, life's good if you live there, successive generations, the proof's in the pudding on that. It's five, basically five feet, I think, three inches shorter than what is proposed. If we go the other way over onto One, One Independence, we look at the funeral home. We picked up two different heights, because we got 3811 to the main ridge of the, of the roof, and then we've got, you know, over 42 feet. There's absolutely beautiful turret defines that property. But we're like, you know, I think we're two, three feet off of what you're looking at there. So they establish a certain mass in that intersection that we don't believe we are inconsistent with. And the quality of the construction that we're looking at, we're looking at a Victorian-style architecture. The Queen Anne's on either side are both Victorian-style architecture as well. There's other, you know, where a Second Empire, there's other Second Empire in the neighborhood. There's a beautiful Second Empire when you go up Penn's Hill. We believe that this stands well, stands proudly, and is a property that can properly anchor this other southern arm of the, of the intersection. If I go to the next one, please, Joe. You've seen this before. Just the points that I want to, to make on this, you'll remember that there were four, there are four curb cuts currently that exist. What we propose to come through, if you look on Independence, we've only got one on Independence Ave, and that's 88 feet from the intersection, 88 feet. It's, it's important to cite curb openings further away from intersections for vehicle queues, for interaction issues. Over similarly on Franklin Street, we're 105 feet away from the intersection. So we've got pluses that exist there. So, um, we've got pluses that exist there. Um, what's interesting, when you take a look at this, some of the questions were, um, with the neighbor meeting, and, and we hear this all the time. I know you folks hear it all the time. Oh my God, the traffic from this is going to be really bad. It's, this is going to be a lot of traffic. If you look at the traffic report, I think it's four vehicle trips in the AM peak hour, four vehicle trips. And in the PM peak hour, it's seven vehicle trips. It, that's, I, I think the conclusion was, I'm going to, I might be wrong, but it was no impact. I think that the impact was point two five?
Two seconds.
Point two seconds, um, difference in, you know, wait times, et cetera. It's, it, and we're not surprised. It's, these residential uses are absolutely negligible. So I'm, you know, I'm happy. At the neighbor meeting, I said, don't worry, believe me, it's going to be nothing. So we went and looked it up. And sure enough, I can now give you some articulation of, uh, of what that is. Um, the, the numbers are really low. Uh, the intersection, I should also tell you folks, um, it's about sixteen thousand vehicle trips per day in the entire intersection. Um, that's not a high number. Um, people for some reason perceive it as high. And I believe that that has to do with just the geometry with the signalized, uh, intersection. But overall, um, levels of service are actually very good. There's no impact on levels of service whatsoever from, um, from nine, uh, residential units. And if you go through, um, you can see that when you, um, when you take a look at the, uh, the, the study that we've got. The next, um, if I may, Joe, the next question was, um, you know, what about, uh, water? Um, because there are puddles that, um, that, you know, currently are there in the intersection. Uh, some of the neighbors said that they've got, um, water, uh, that's in their basements. And they had a concern that, um, that this would, uh, contribute to that. And I explained it without, um, without having any drawings, et cetera, just kind of very, very layman, uh, based. Uh, but what I wanted to do this evening is to actually bring in the plan and go through, um, you know, what that is. You folks have seen, you know, Coltech infiltration chambers, et cetera, um, the people watching at home. You know, I, I don't think a lot of them have. Uh, what's interesting about this, uh, today is if you go there on this eight thousand eight hundred square feet, give or take, just a pavement without any drainage. Rain hits it, it goes. There's nowhere for it to go other than on the surface to go into the street. Add to that number, the impervious, uh, you know, twenty-three hundred square foot building. And again, no onsite drainage. And you are looking at an absolute, you know, effective water hits and it just sheds off and it goes into the street. From there, you know, it, it goes all different, uh, bad places. Um, the engineers in this instance, um, the design reduces the impervious, uh, area from the existing condition. Under the stormwater regs, um, you know, that's, that's great, right? It's, it's, it's better for, um, for a currently disturbed and developed site. And what they do is they say, you've got to meet that, they meet that. Um, what they have done is they have designed this drainage system as if it was brand new construction. Um, again, sure, it's great. It's a big plus that it's got less impervious. But they took the prior, um, drainage design, they kind of blew it up and they went back in. And this is a vast improvement of, um, of what you got. Um, the infiltration, uh, just so, so folks know, you can see the arms inside, they kind of go in. Those are, um, drainage manholes. So rainwater is directed into those. The rainwater goes in, uh, goes in underground into these systems. And the systems hold the water, they delay it. I think it's like a seventy-two hour cycle on these. And they do is while they hold it, they start to release a little bit, uh, into the ground. And then eventually over that seventy-two hour period, it's basically taken in. So instead of being a rain event, which happens real quick, it's stretched and stretched and stretched. And that's how modern engineering, uh, controls drainage. All of that is set up, uh, in this design. Um, actually it was reviewed by, um, City of Quincy Engineering. And, you know, it was, oh, we saw the other one. This is bigger, it's different, it's better. Um, and the answer to those is yes, yes, yes. Um, this will absolutely vastly improve the current condition that's out there. The other thing is, again, you'll remember I said, we don't have a basement. So by not going down, not, not getting down near the groundwater, et cetera, um, you know, we just kind of take all of that, uh, off the table. So from a, um, from a neighbor perspective, someone who's looking at it, um, I can point to all of those elements to show you that this is not going to, um, cause any flooding or any increases in any of that. Um, and I, another woman thought that, um, every unit that's added, um, like if you take a shower or a bath or you do laundry, that, um, that wastewater contributed to drainage problems in the road and all that. So we had a discussion on the separation of wastewater streams from drainage, et cetera. But, um, it was a good opportunity just to explain and have, you know, have the counselors ask questions, have the neighbors ask questions. And I just wanted to make sure that, uh, those were something that, uh, that I brought up. Um, anything else that you think I, you know, you mentioned? So, um, I think the last one, Joe, is just, um, that's, um, you saw that before, which was stacked with the, uh, the existing condition. Um, honestly, when I was in my office, um, I thought, well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna close showing the gas station now. Because, you know, it's, it's, it's just, it is what it is. Um, and I didn't know that, didn't do that because everyone knows. No, nobody at the neighborhood meeting said, we love that gas station. No one does. Um, I think everyone, you know, understands that, uh, modernizing, uh, the area, having private investments, all a plus. Um, the stakeholder who's involved now has a long history in the City of Quincy. And, um, I, I think it's quite a, um, quite a good opportunity that it's somebody who is looking to do something with this level of detail and design, um, coming down. So the Adams, John Quincy Adams House will be to your right, McKay's will be to your left. As you enter, um, going south, coming down Franklin Street, this is what you could see. Um, the trees aren't here, so shame on me, picture beautiful trees. Um, the other thing is you'll see these, um, these utility poles, they just, they are what they are. They're really unsightly. Um, we are working or Mr. Crocker is working with the utility, uh, providers to come up with a plan. Um, the furthest one, which is down to the liquor store, that is where the, um, curb opening will be. So that's going to be moved back off of the center of the curb opening. But the desire is to, um, see if we can get either new poles, poles placed better, or if possible, if we could, um, work to put something underground as part of conduit. Um, again, this is one of those situations where the intersection is ripe for a refresh. And it's going to be a question of what plans there are and, you know, what we can do so that we're not duplicating work. If we were to move poles and then all of a sudden, three years, someone comes in and says, oh, the poles have to be here or there. It, it's just kind of a waste of resources. If there was a way to, um, see if there was a way to, you know, to use those resources towards a more common aesthetic, um, I would suggest that taking those poles and all of those lines won't only make this building more attractive, it's going to make the entire intersection more attractive. And if that can start, um, a municipal trend here, whether it's the utility provider or, you know, however it's done, if things could be put underground, um, not even this, but just think of the, um, the Adams birthplace, you know, it's, it would be such a plus if this was, um, the ignition, to be able to get, um, people working, to be able to start to improve the intersection. Again, the houses around it are beautiful. They're absolutely magnificent. Um, you know, it's just, it's a great spot in town. Um, the intersection, um, can do better. I think it, it should do better. Um, hopefully, um, I've gone through, I've explained this, uh, the best that I can. I know it took a long time, but there's a little bit of history, so I wanted to go back through it. Um, I can answer any questions, uh, that you folks have, if that's, uh?
Let's see, does anybody have any questions right now?
You actually answered my question about the utility poles, because some of the pitches we're showing, no utility poles, and then we're showing. So it's almost like wishful thinking. You know, you mentioned in your past experience that you've seen the state and, um, municipalities come in and saying, okay, that's time for a refresh. I agree with you. I think it is time for a refresh there. I think that, uh, I think it's beautiful. I, I, I gotta tell you, I'm really happily surprised because when I first saw this, when it was proposed a while ago?
Yeah.
I think, you know, you, when you, it's a duck, it's a duck, it's a duck. It doesn't really change much. This has changed in my eyes, uh, tremendously. I, I, I think it's really good looking, except for that utility pole. Sorry.
Yeah. No, and, and I, I want to be really upfront, like, you don't see the trees, they, you know, they would really dress it up. If I was a more experienced lawyer, I would have made sure those trees were there.
And I think the, uh, the cantilever, the, what Arthur put in there with the cantilever, that, that's, uh, that's nice. That's a really nice stuff.
Yeah. And I should say, Arthur and, um, Alita are not here this evening, but, um, you know, they, they've made all of these, you know, changes up to the minute. I just, I didn't have time to have the renders put all the, the trees there. And the trees also hide the building a little bit, so this is.
Well, it takes, it takes away that, I, I think, at least looking at it, it, it takes away that, that height thing, you know, because of the cantilever, right? I like it. I like the looks of it.
And there's really not a lot of brick. Um, there are some brick faces here and there, um, but we really went with, like, what, take a look at one sixty, um, Franklin. I mean, it's really attractive. Um, but, you know, the, the siding, the residential look, this goes a lot more residential. I think the brick gave more of an institutional feel.
And also it says trash recycling. So is that where the dumpster is going to be? Is that, you're going to put a dumpster back there?
Yep. So that's enclosed. I kind of glossed over that a little bit. It's on the Franklin side, but it's all enclosed. It's in its own area. Yep. Thank you very much, Joe. See those black, um, point?
Oh yeah. So that, that's where the dumps now. And I guess the next question would be like, snow? Of course, they, they probably truck it out of there or something.
Yeah. If it, so we, we're asked that all the time, um, for like, for commercial projects, we wind up having, you know, dedicated snow storage areas on residential projects of this size, not, not big ones. Um, we'll usually have, um, things they can push it around, push it through and then get rid. At a certain level, um, there's too much snow and it winds up, uh, getting trucked out. Because this is going to be a condominium association, it's, it's, you're actually going to have owners, um, with budgets for snow removal, with, you know, certain demands. And in our experience, the ownership, um, ownership on projects of this size works, works really well as opposed to some projects are too small to have like onsite property managers, et cetera. So this winds up, um, it, it, it winds up being in a, a good spot. Another reason why they're talking about expensive plantings, they're expecting, you know, they're going to have a landscape budget. Um, you know, someone's going to have to mow that, et cetera. But the, the snow removal is part of that.
And just one other point that I, I saw it in your drawings, you had a lot of downlighting coming from the, from the, the building itself. Uh, will there be, and of course the neighbors would, would, it affects them the most, obviously, if there's any type of uplighting or?
We, right, no. So, um, we've got, we've got kind of wall packs on the back because it's so small and because it's so proximate. We'll have some lighting underneath and then wall packs will be bright enough to just get the back edge of, um, of those cars. The, um, liquor store is the abutter behind. So there's no residential, um, you know, direct down here to the south other than you get past the liquor store and then you get past their, you know, their loading docks, et cetera. The front, we took off lights. Um, the original design had, um, I, I don't know if they were art deco, but they didn't match the building. They were, they were odd. And, um, I think planning said something like, you better get rid of those lights. Um, I.
Were they that blunt, were they?
Yeah. No, but I saw them. They're straight, they were in a, they were a different color. I don't know. Someone had a lighting package that they plugged in. But, um, lights, things of that nature, we have to go to historic. So, um, I, I'm not sweating the details because they're going, they're going to look at it and they're going to have a lot to say. Um, and, you know, I defer. They're, they're going to know, um, you know, what lighting's appropriate for this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Sure, I have a few questions. Yeah. So definitely is nice of building in the first building.
Thank you.
But, um, you guys are using every square inch of that lot. I didn't even see how you're going to do the backside of, like, put up the hottie board on the backside of the building. I mean, you're right up against the property line. Is the abutter going to let you come in there and, and use their property to, to put that in?
The, um, the backside, no. So maybe I, I didn't say it right. So I'm going to point to the backside of the building.
That's where you are? So that doesn't cantilever over the parking lot? Okay. I missed on the street.
I misspoke. When I said cantilever, I should have, yeah. So cantilever is over this.
Okay.
And then so this winds up being open. We had a, um, we had a fence which was proposed back there. Um, because I was thinking, you know, fence is always a hard, uh, hard barrier. We got feedback, um, that there was actually a preference that there be live, um, live plantings. So we changed, um, we changed so that we wound up, um, putting all of that, uh, in.
Okay. And I, I know you mentioned the snow removal, but where are you going to push the snow to? There's no way to push the snow. You can't push it out into the street. There's nowhere to.
Yeah.
There's nowhere to store snow. Nowhere.
We, we've got, we've got edges for the snow that we're getting, we've got, we've got edges that it can go to. And then once it gets to a certain point, once, once it gets to a certain point.
Every one of those is a parking spot. So if you have a car there, there's nowhere to put any snow. That's just my opinion.
Yeah. So it's, okay. We don't, well, first of all, we haven't had a whole lot of snow in a whole lot of years.
Yeah, don't hold your breath.
I know, no kidding. I know. That's what I said to Mike. Um, it works. We've never had a problem with the snow removal. I mean, just like right now with, you know, that undefined what's there. They, they go up, they push it around, they put it in rows. They put it where it can go. In this instance, you're going to wind up with nine families that are saying, I want my parking space. I want this. Get the snowplow guys. So you've got, you know, it's good to say, keep your eye on it. You got to make sure that it works. Um, but the bottom line on this is you're going to have nine families who are all the bosses saying, get the snow out of there. It'll wind up, uh, it'll wind up working. If it has to be pushed where, you know, the bikes are, et cetera, there are plenty of places that it can go. Um, yeah, we don't, on something like this, I didn't think that would either be a question because we usually have larger format where that's an issue. On small residential properties like this, we, we just don't.
So we got this, that it's not going to the back, but then in the front of the building, we're right on the, on the main intersection. That's, that is going to be a problem when you, when you go to build it, right? Because you're going to have to shut down the street to do some of that.
Yeah, just like, just like.
Right.
Yeah. I mean, it happens, it happens everywhere, just like when all the other properties.
Making sure that.
Yeah. No, no different than other properties within fifty feet that are now done. And they look great. And, you know, people, people are happy. It sort of basically be the same, same thing. We don't want to be treated any different than anyone else. But scaffolding, yeah, that's how, yeah. I mean, you know, what is there now today is, is so different, right? So it's, it's different, you know, from an apples, oranges. It just, it is. It's one story. It's, it's all the way back. Some of the early iterations, people were saying, well, can we put the parking up front? Can we? So a lot of thought was into how we laid this out. And then also, um, you know, folks said, we can't have any on-street parking. It's, you've got to absorb all the parking on site. So that drove, um.
And I know we'll hear from the neighbors in, in the coming minutes, but what was your take on it? Was, uh, were they happy with the changes? Were they, um, are they against it still?
I think the biggest comment that came out was, um, that the height, um, by having units in the roof as opposed to just if I had a roof, um, that that's going to have negative connotations. I don't know how far away someone's house, like, I didn't know where the people lived. Um, you know, it's, if you're a hundred feet away and somebody lives up there, it, as opposed, you know, people living up in attics in this neighborhood are actually quite common. Um, if this one, I mean, that's one of the questions. From a site plan review question, you know, I mean, that's something that I'm going to have to go in and get findings and, you know, variants from the zoning board. But from a site plan review, um, basis, this works. Drainage was, um, drainage was, I think, probably the biggest concern and, uh, traffic. And again, those, it's perception. It's not, it just does not, um, it does not show itself in the data whatsoever.
I mean, that's not going to do anything for traffic once it's built. It's just going to be done in construction.
Yeah. And it's actually, it's, I, I, I'm sure it's less than the traffic gets generated today by the garage.
And then the only other thing I said, good luck getting those utilities moved.
Yeah, I know, I know. Well, we're engaged, we've, um.
Good luck. Good luck.
I agree a hundred percent. Um, we have been successful in the past through perseverance. It just takes, takes a long time and often, uh, comes, it comes in real late in the game, which is a problem. But all we can do is the best that we can.
And one other thing that you mentioned that just popped in my head. You mentioned something about, have you already talked to the city about doing the sidewalk? You mentioned something about having the city do something with the sidewalk?
No. The question was whether, um, we could, uh, continue the design aesthetic that is up between schools. So School Street, if you go Franklin, where you go up, you go past North Payne, uh, you wind up hitting, uh, Water Street. In that area, as you're going further north up to School Street, when you go into the corner, it looks like this. So you, your eye won't notice it. You, you could drive by it all the time and you don't know. But if I tell you that now, if you drive out there, you'll say, huh, no kidding. Um, it's a standard that the city held people to back in the day and it disappeared for some reason. Um, the question was, in this instance, whether it's something that could be restored to the design aesthetic to be able to put this in. So the city, you know, the, Mr. O'Connell will buy the pavers, he'll buy the concrete, he'll buy the granite curb, he'll put all that in. So that's something that part of, um, part of the, the process is part of the mitigation. You know, some people do the traffic and, you know, maintenance fund, et cetera. This is somebody who's, you know, some people may say, "I wanna write a check and you guys spend it where you want." Mr. O'Connell had an interest in, um, you know, actually, you know, taking some of the, um, the suggestions. Other properties have not done it. There's a lot of new sidewalk in this intersection that doesn't have it. So you may say, "Oh, that's window dressing. Don't do it." Um, you know, it's, I think it's nice. Um, and it may not be in our, you know, in our immediate futures, but at some point, someone's gonna, gonna wanna do a project and the city's gonna say, "That's great. Put in a two-foot brick strip." And then, you know, over the course of time, you know, hopefully this is something that, uh, that looks good.
And I know this is a small project, but I'd be, I'd be, I have to say it, the men and women of Quincy would love to work on any project being built in the city.
Yeah.
So when you're choosing a contractor, if it gets approved, please consider using someone that can hire the men and women in the city of Quincy. We don't like to see Rhode Island plates come into Quincy or New Hampshire plates when they're building all these buildings. When we live here, we pay the taxes.
Well, I'm going to, um, I'm going to suggest that my client, I'm gonna guess that he's lived in Quincy longer than you have.
I, I know he has, so, um...
Yeah, no, no. Duly, duly noted. Um, there was one other point, uh, excuse me, just one second, um, that just escaped me. That was a really good point that you made. Uh, it'll, it'll probably come back to me. Sorry, Don.
That's all I had.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, going through the first iteration of this project last spring, uh, a common theme or, uh, complaint, if you will, was that the building was too tall and didn't fit on the land, as Member Kelly had suggested. And I, I appreciate you, you pointing out that, uh, you know, surrounding buildings that might have the same height at a certain point.
Yep.
I would push back on that a bit. Um, you know, standing in plenty of lines at Sweeney Brothers, uh, doesn't feel like I'm dwarfed next to that building, you know? That, that setback is totally different than what...
Me too.
Than what you're, you're, you're pointing out. And even 160 Franklin, you know, again, I appreciate it might be, uh, of similar height, but what's the setback at that property off of the, the main street?
Yep. It's non-conforming with respect to...
No, understood, but it's, you know, this project is, is right on, right on the street. Uh, and I, and I would venture to guess, I, I didn't go to the community meeting the other night, but I would venture to guess that the neighbors would have similar complaints, um, such as they did with the first project about the height and the size of the project on this lot. Um, and with that, the rooftop, you know, uh, what's, what's the rooftop gonna look like? Coming down Franklin Street, you're gonna have probably a point of view...
Joe, can we find it? Uh, you know, maybe, yeah, right here you go. So that will have a centralized, um, elevator or headhouse, which will be in the middle. So at some point, far enough away, you, you'll see that there's going to be some mechanical up there. Um, but it just, it doesn't render because it's so, um, it's so centralized. So you've got, I don't know, 20, 30 feet from all directions to, to have it be there. So that, so you're going to basically see, uh, that, um, that dark mansard roof.
Is that the only thing you'll see on the rooftop or are there gonna be HVAC units or whatever have you on top?
Anything that's up there, MEP will be centralized.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, there may, you know, just, there'll be a, um, there'll be a vent for toilets, you, things like that. But, you know, it's nothing that...
You, you wouldn't be able to see it from...
You're not going, you're not going to see it. And, you know, I said something, um, in a response the other evening, and it's, things are up there. If you get a drone, you're going to see it.
Sure.
Um, if, if you go over, you know, the beloved funeral home, if you look at it, it's, it's, it's a rubber roof, which is, cuts the waist of, um, in 1890s, but when you're on the street, it looks great, right? But, um, so it's not gonna be anything that you're going to see. And frankly, it, we find that the difference between the existing condition and the proposed, like, the bigger the delta, the more, you know, oh my, oh my goodness. Um, so it's not something which is taken in, it's, you know, isolated context. If there was something, you know, if there was a, a big historic house like up the street where 100, you know, where 106, 108 was, um, that comes down, um, that property went in, it's over 40 feet, right? It's right in there, North Payne Street. There it is. It's got the commercial units down on the ground level. Everyone, you know, everyone says, "I, I really like that building." Um, the broker was at the neighborhood meeting and she said, you know, "It's been received very positively." This is very similar in many respects. I mean, this is four feet. If you're standing down below and you can perceive four feet and that is a reason to deny site plan review, then, you know, I, I, I would just, I, I'd suggest that that is, that's not, um, sufficient. The other thing, um, that is here, and, and I've, I've been doing this for 36 years, I would love for this to happen because I do not like the service station that is there now. If this doesn't happen, it's going to be another service station. And I'm going to suggest that this building for the next generations and generations is going to be able to provide shelter for nine families, especially in this economy where we've got problems with housing. And it's going to be a vast improvement over the gas station. Maybe at some point, economics change?
Sure. I don't think you're...
I don't know.
I don't think you'll find a, uh, an argument that, you know, a, a project would dress that corner up nicely.
Yeah.
Um, in fact, we've heard that multiple times.
Yeah.
Like in one of the first iterations.
But from an economic standpoint?
No, I, I, I understand that point.
I put my cards on the table super early and what I've not done is I didn't dance around and I, I just said plainly, "Mansard roof, the intent is," and that's why I did all the coloring. I'm doing everything that I can from a design standpoint to camouflage it, to be able to reflect back on the clapboard and other, you know, other architectural styles in the neighborhood. I'm doing what I can to provide a premium building that hits the economic pieces and also at the same time pulls all the vehicles off of the street. That was, so I've heard certain things that were said, um, so I'm, I'm doing a little bit of juggling and I can accomplish a lot of those. The ability to, you know, change the height, um, there is something that I just, I can't get to. So that'll be, you know, from a site plan perspective, that'll, that'll be on you folks. But I've been real open about it.
Yeah, I, I don't wanna take up too much more time, but, uh, you know, parking has always been a, a concern in this neighborhood.
Yep.
You know, thinking back to when, um, Quincy Adams Tea Station opened up on, on Independence.
This will be the best parked property of all of those properties that I just mentioned.
And so, but for guest parking, you know, you, you drive down Franklin, Independence, Sweeney, Sweeney, I'm not gonna speak for Sweeney, Sweeney Brothers, but they, they block off their, you know, their parking lot.
Can I have the first one, Joe?
For, for parking issues.
Yeah, it's, it, this, this will be, um, I'll walk around with you if you want and I'll say, "Doesn't conform, doesn't conform, doesn't conform. I've got, I've got two, two parking spaces per unit," which, when I go into other, when I go into other communities, the standard for something like this is usually like 1.5.
No, 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 I have no issue with your, your parking for, for the residents. I'm just, I'm bringing, and I know you've heard this, I'm sure, but for guest parking, you know, I, all these concerns, again, coming from when this project was first proposed. I know it's not your project, it's the, the one that was proposed prior, but it's, it's a very similar project...
Yeah.
To what's being proposed tonight. So I'd imagine that the concerns and issues that the neighbors brought before this body last year...
Right.
Or earlier this year, uh, would, would likely be the same. Not all of them, but,
Right.
But I'll, I'll leave that at that.
But I would just, I'll just say, I, people can say, you know, "I, I don't like X, Y, and Z," but you just, you know, you just have to look at what the numbers are, look at what the norms are for, you know, under, you know, ITE requirements for parking spaces. This is actually very amply parked. And what happens, um, for visitors is it's, you know, they happen all the time. What's your name or away, or they don't have a car, parking space number two, happens, it happens all the time. This, this property will be, this actually will be superior to any of the other, you know, you've got three, three stories with a, with a, um, so you've got a three-story, three-family with, um, a driveway. If anything, it's got, what, you can park three cars there. And a lot of the complaints are there's on-street parking. Of course there are, because people, you know, enough people have to park there. Um, this, by having two per unit is, like, the numbers are, you know, people can say, "I'm afraid that it's going to be bad," but the bottom line is, this actually is able to handle the parking demand on, um, onsite, unlike other, um, properties that require street parking.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Any other questions over here?
Can I just say one more thing, Kim? By Larry's, on, on the roof thing, the drawing that Joe might wanna show it is A 1.5, shows the roof and what the, if, if that's what the architect, uh, I think it's 8.15 in our little package, that's, only has the elevator shaft and a stairwell and no, no actual, like, air units on the roof.
Let me, I'll, I'll pull what I've got, I've got probably a bigger format than you have.
It's probably right in here.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. This is what I was talking about. Um, you can see the distance. And you can see the distances, it's centrally located and then that shows, you know, basically, um, the roof, which to your eye is going to be flat, but because of drainage, that's what those lines are. Those are slight deviations to direct the water. Um, but central core elevator, um, and again, if you are down low, you just, you don't, you don't have the angle to be able to see it.
What's the height of that headhouse?
Um, move. Can I, um, give that to you between now and I, yeah, I could, it's basically 8.3 by 8.11 wide. Um, maybe my team can get it while I'm, uh, doing this. I'll get that to you. Thank you.
Um, and then just, I guess, two other questions or two things I'd like to see, I suppose. The first, what I'd like to see is, if there could be a calculation performed, I'm sure that there can be, but I'm an attorney too, so I don't, I can't do the math. Um, at what, I suppose, what the ground cover is for snow. So if you have an inch of snow...
Yep.
What volume and where are you putting it? And then, is there a number where it's two inches, three inches, so that we can condition our decision if this goes in, in your favor to say, "Okay, in your condo docs and as a condition of, of this decision, when it's two inches or when it's forecast, it's going off-site" and so that we know that.
What we'll do, exactly. We'll, we'll actually use, when I said we do this for the commercial, that's what she's getting at, because we have that for larger commercial. So it, it'll basically be the same here and that's, that's not a problem because it's, it's a comfort level. Definitely can get that for you.
Okay. And then the other question I had, so there's two spaces, as we've heard, per, per unit. Are those going to be, I guess, assigned or easements or whatever you wanna call it, sold with the units? So that each, each unit gets two spaces?
So there'll be an allocation. Um, I don't know if it's going to be hard deeding of specific numbers, um, because obviously the covered ones are going to be more, um, more desirable than the others. But that's, that, you know, it's not gonna be a free-for-all, it'll be assigned. Um, and the assignments will be, um, attached, but it'll be a, if I say net number, that feels right. Um, but there will, there won't, I don't envision it will be, you get spaces one and two or whatnot. It might, it might be, you get a covered space and you get one of the others.
Okay, got it.
That's the way we've done it in other buildings.
Okay. That's all I had.
Great, thank you.
One last question.
Yes.
Uh, just one last question. So you got nine apartments. I didn't see a mechanical room on the inside. You see an elevator room. Are all your condenser units gonna be put up on the roof?
Yes, I don't...
All the condenser units going on the roof?
Um, I don't know. Um, I would expect so, but I do not know. And I can get, I can get an answer to that.
There's no mechanical room inside the building.
Yeah, it's on the first floor.
Well, you're not gonna get nine condenser units in that.
Yeah. Oh, no, 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 no. I thought you meant like an air handler, okay. Um, so yeah, I do, you asked a question. I do, I do expect that's the answer. I'll, before our next meeting, I'll get you some more, um, but what we usually do is...
Because again, those, those are gonna sit up on raised things. They're gonna be up to, so they're gonna have to add to the height.
What, what we usually do with those is we usually aggregate those around the center. Where this has the center core, they catch a corner of each of the units, um, and I'll get that to you. I've got...
There's like the screening area next to the headhouse.
Like a parapet? I'll get that information, yeah. I, there's no dimension on, um, on the, the headhouse. If you take a look, it's on like A 2.1, you can see it, but...
Okay.
And there's no dimension for that either, so this is kinda flat. Um, but just know it's gonna be extra.
Just a question, just if you can add, uh, uh, obviously those are gonna be raised up because they're not gonna sit directly on the roof. How big are the ra, how big are you gonna raise them up?
Yep.
And how big are the units gonna be?
Okay, good. Excellent. And also, if I can get a proposed, um, placement, we'll give you like an idea of how far they would be from the edge, so you can get an idea there as well.
All right, great. I think it makes sense now, um, to move over to public hearing since we've heard a presentation. Um, so we're going to open this up for a public hearing, just kind of as a matter of course. If you just wanna raise your hand, I can call on you and you can come up, identify your name and address. Um, there's also sign-in sheets on the side, so if you don't wanna come up, but you wanna sign in for, against the project, you can do that too. Before we get into kind of the public comment, I do have two letters here that I'm just going to read for the record. The first is from Douglas Mens. "Hello, I want to express my opposition to the condo development at 10 Independence Ave. I don't feel that this should be built in the historical district with the Adams houses. Also, there are restrictions of record on the deed by Shell Oil Company dated November 10th, 1997." Deed, it says, uh, 120327 book, 12077, page 670, 671. "The restrictions of 45 years implicate that the property says likely contaminated as a gasoline service station have been there for many years. I hope that our planning board rejects the developer's plan and keeps the historical district as it is. Sincerely, Doug Mens." And the second is from Joseph and Mary Chapetzky. "Councilman Ash, we received your letter about the development on, on Independence Ave today. We are unable to attend the meeting. We would like to tell you we completely are against it. It's in a terrible location, which will cause parking and traffic problems. The area has the Adams houses and businesses that will be affected by the buildings of residents and their guests. The city has more than enough apartments, um, I presume it should say, and condos built and being built. Has that, has that become difficult to drive anywhere in the city? It's time the city council stop rubber stamping, taking business, and throwing up all these sweetheart deals. Thank you." Um, so with that, we'll open it up for public comment. Yep, sir.
Hi, my name is Taylor Campbell. Uh, I'll be quick because I'm not in the butter. I live at 133 Willow Street near Eastern Nazarene. Um, but I'd be tempted to live here. This looks really cute. Uh, my only critique is that I think there's actually too much parking. Um, and, uh, if I lived there, I would have no use for two parking spaces. It's eight-minute walk to Quincy Adams. There's three different bus lines that literally stop right at that intersection. Another one that stops half a mile away, it's, uh, sorry, quarter mile away. It's half a mile from a grocery store, hardware store, pharmacy. Um, I think it's unfortunate that, uh, parking, uh, insatiable thirst for parking has driven out the potential for multi-use, uh, ground floor. Uh, I think it'd be great to see, uh, a little coffee shop or something on the ground floor. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Yes?
Good evening. My name is Richard Sweeney Jr., uh, 1 Independence Avenue, Residence 20 Deuce Road in Quincy. Before I begin, I'd just like to answer Mr. Kelly's question. The, the predominant, uh, theme at that, uh, community meeting the other night and the ones in the previous are the same. Most people are mostly concerned about the height of this building. So this new proposal for 10 Independence Avenue includes... So this new proposal for 10 Independence Avenue includes some changes that would seem to make the project more desirable to the neighborhood. These include changing from a dark brick exterior to a lighter-colored hardy board. No basement because of the existing water issues. A better parking plan, but really no addressing the guests that were going to come to visit these people. Where are they going to park? There is limited street parking. The other thing is centering the front door. All positive factors. But six months, after six months, the developer is still proposing nine units and still asking for four stories in a three-zone area. Four stories, still too high and inappropriate for this historical setting. Again, the building is absolutely too large for this small-sized lot. We know by right the developer is entitled to build three condominium units on just under 11,000-square-foot lot. A four-story building on such a small lot would just look out of proportion. Two recent developments on Franklin Street worked within the three-story limit, so we know it can be done. Councilor Ash has asked the question at the meeting about reducing the ceiling height in an attempt to lower the overall height of the building. I'm not sure he received an answer, and I'm sure that it would, I'm not sure whether it would make a major difference. I take exception, too, to the drawing with the cupola of our funeral home, built in the late 1880s, early 1890s. It was a decorative thing. It's a small highlight to the building. And we just tried to duplicate and add a new gable on the Independence Ave side to mimic the gable that's above, to try and enhance the quality of the building. I don't think it compares to a fourth floor and three condominiums. This is a dynamic historic neighborhood, located at the crossroads of two important gateway entrances to the city of Quincy, Franklin Street and Independence Avenue. This extremely busy intersection serves as a corridor to the southern access to downtown Quincy Center. The highlight of this neighborhood, and what makes it so special, are the birthplaces of two United States Presidents, John Adams and John Quincy Adams. Under the stewardship of the National Park Services, these birthplaces are designated as historic landmarks. They are national treasures. The historical aspect of our neighborhood should be recognized, promoted, and enhanced. No one disputes that the current repair shop is unsightly. A reasonably designed three-story condominium would be a tremendous improvement. I would hope that you, as members of the planning board, listen to the concerns and fears of the neighbors and the abuddars who will have to live with this project if it's approved as-is. Three stories, six units, or a mixture of smaller units and standard setbacks are not unreasonable requests for those who live and work in this neighborhood. Any benefit of the doubt should lean toward the neighborhood. I would like to say that this development company is one of the best, that they have a proven track record, and no one can dispute the fine work that they have done throughout this city. But I would propose to Attorney Tarcio and his team that there are still much room for compromise and negotiation to make this project appealing and acceptable to all in this historic section of Quincy. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes?
Hello, my name is Cindy Brandy. I live at 52 Independence Avenue. I've stood up here before and objected to the first two proposals. I do not object to this one. It, it has, yes, it's big, but it's much nicer than what we've got there. They've paid attention to a lot of the feedback, I feel, from the city. I agree with the one that 18 spaces is probably too much parking. So I'm not seeing a huge problem with visitor parking. So since I've, since I've said no, sometimes I thought it was important to stand up and say, I, I think it's okay.
Can I ask you a question? So what was the driving force behind you changing your position on it?
The brick was really bad. That did look like a wall. I like the fact that the, the architecture is detailed, moving the door to the front spot and having some of the plantings around. I'm a walker. I drive as little as possible, and I walk. And it's made it a little bit better. Would I like it to be a lot smaller in five-foot setbacks? Of course I would. But I also, you know, economic realities are such that I'd rather that than the gas station that we currently have that is in eyesore. I love the idea that perhaps the city would work with them to bury the stupid poles. I think just removing that would make a huge improvement from looking from the Adams family's stuff. If we could get to the point where you do bump outs so that you're not walking across while the lights are switching and the cars are starting to gun, so you don't have to scurry like rats to get across, that would be good, too. So this is, you know, it's an improve, it's an improvement to what's there. The city is never going to have enough housing. I'll be honest. You know, we, we grow or we die, and I'd rather not die. So this is acceptable. It's not a 15-story building. Yeah, it's three and a half, it's four, but I like, I like the architecture of it. I like the fact that they're listening. There shouldn't be any on-street parking with this. The fact that you'll be able to see around the corner, the setback of the, of the five feet, that's important for those who do drive. So, you know, in, looking through the first one and the second one, this is so much better from my perspective.
Thank you. May I have, sir?
Good evening. My name's James Dunn, 167 Babcock Street, Quincy. This illustration looks marvelous compared to what's here. No one can disagree with that that's in this room, I don't think. The nine units, it is a lot, but I'm a contractor. I know what you have to do today. A piece of four-inch pipe has gone from $20 to $80 now, okay? So I understand what the lawyer is saying, that they have to, they get a goal they have to meet to make this work. If you people don't vote to make this work, your only alternative is to go back to Shell and ask them to do a historic thing on that gas station, to make it look to fit into the neighborhood, because it's terrible. I mean, everybody knows there's a, there's a parking problem going up Independence Ave. But 18 parking spaces, I'm involved in a lot of these projects in Quincy. A lot of people don't drive anymore. The gate's right up the street. We hear all this hoopla, if they open the gate, they're going to be breaking into our houses and parking in front of our houses. I'm up and down the street 40 times a day. I don't see all this illegal parking. That's what we have police for. I think it's a beautiful illustration. And Mr. O'Connell will build that, because I know you've seen people show you this, and you end up with something else. He will build this. If anything, it'll look better than that, I know from his track record. Thank you, board members.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Thank you for this opportunity. And I want to thank the planning board for these challenging questions and for your insight into making decisions that are best for us in the present and certainly for the future. And I am the National Park Service Superintendent for the Adams National Historical Park. My name is Mary Ann Peake, and I manage properties with historic integrity. And we also feel the pain sometimes of poor decisions that are made along the way. And we look out the window and we see the results of that. So I, I like to be a good listener, to hear what the plans are, and maybe influence strong and good, supportive, smart growth within our community, so we all benefit. So I'm really looking for compromise and opportunity. We know the developer, who is certainly very remarkable and well-respected throughout our community. And we also know a lot of the players who will be a part of this project. So my comments are going to be based on my experience with the neighbors in the neighborhood managing a national historic landmark in this very community where they want to do this construction. So when you hear my ideas, many of them were gleaned from the standing-room-only meetings of community invited by our councillor, Richard Ash. And he also had some very good insight that I hope he'll share later. Some of my concerns and suggestions relate to the building and size and design. And we're all in an opportunity where it's in early stages, so we all have an influence. The proposed four-story condominium might be too large for the location, especially considering its proximity to the sidewalk and surrounding structures like the National Historic Landmark birthplace, as I just mentioned. The recommendation from neighbors is to reduce the building to three stories to better fit with the surrounding architecture. Excuse me. The building size could potentially cast shadows and affect pedestrian safety, traffic, and the landscape around the roadway. We heard that at those meetings. Clearly, this major intersection needs to be examined to improve traffic flow, access, and pedestrian safety. There are five connecting roads to this area. In addition, the impacts of tourism, trolley traffic, and parking is a critical challenge as businesses are expanding, in a good way. Development is underway with a lack of adequate parking. And experience is the best teacher. If you drive by the Adams Mansion today or any day in the evening, you'll see 10 cars parked on Adams Street. Why? Because they don't fit into apartment parking lots. They don't, the people can't afford the parking fee to park their car within the structure, so they go on street parking. So we want to be sensitive to make the right decision, whatever that decision might be. Consider revisiting the project to accommodate three-story structure with simpler architectural lines that blend into the surrounding community in the neighborhood and the national historic landmark. Consider the Adams Birthplaces. A pie-shaped property, three-quarters of an acre, is more square footage than the proposed build-out of a nine-unit structure with 18 parking spaces plus room for traffic to enter and exit for 18-plus vehicles, including delivery trucks, dumpster pickups, and more than five intersecting roads. Now, is this justification for a small build-out? That's to be determined, because I understand the economics of it, too. You know, they can't go build something small to suit us if it's not financially profitable for them. That makes common sense. So reconfigure the building to include smaller units might be an option. Studios or one-bedrooms within three stories for young professionals or for those downsizing, which would help meet the needs of a local housing market. Or focus on minimizing visual and auditory disruptions from rooftop mechanical equipment and explore options for underground utilities. I like the idea about putting those wires and telephone poles underground. Increase the green space and provide more visitor parking by reducing the number of units. It only makes sense, but I know there's a problem there. And reconsidering the building footprint. Does the first floor have to serve as storage bins, utility equipment for a systems operation, and a gym? Could it convert to units so the fourth story could be eliminated? Three or four trees placed around the structure or a 12- to 24-inch surround of grass is not adequate for green space for this-size structure. At one of the public meetings hosted by City Councillor Richard Ash, he made a recommendation that the developer consider minimizing the footprint, and neighbors expressed further discussion was warranted or would be appropriate. It is hopeful the developer will pursue this discussion as suggested. In addition, the developer's legal counsel suggested that should the developer withdraw, the neighbors would be left with or subject to what is there now or another garage. However, an alternative could be to explore the possibility of purchasing the land for conservation or public park, use to benefit the broader neighborhood, and to maintain a balance between development and green space. Consider community preservation funds to acquire the property to be converted to a park. Open green space for park-like activities and enjoyment to benefit the youth and community as this valued suburb of the city is undergoing redevelopment. The city purchased the Acapulco Building for a city park near Hancock Common. Could this be alternative open space for the city to acknowledge President John Quincy Adams and Louisa Catherine Adams? So there are other alternatives or options for consideration. Ensure that any peer-review findings and any public feedback are made transparent to ensure informed decision-making, because I think we're all, we all have an opportunity to be in this together and to be really proud of the decisions we make. It seems like smart growth needs to be a priority for a more balanced approach that integrates the community's needs, reduces the building's scale, and preserves green space that could lead to a more positive outcome for both the developers and neighbors and community as it renews itself. Now, when Charles Francis Adams acquired the property in 1848 at the Adams Birthplaces, it contained 200 acres, and today we have three-quarters of an acre. He donated the land to the Old Colony Railroad, and he also donated Marymount Park to the, to the city of Quincy. So we have an opportunity here to make the best possible decisions about this proposed building or whatever its future may be. And I really wish, if it is building this particular structure, that we all can look forward to it with great opportunity. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Yes?
I'm Emily Johnson. I reside at 36 Carfield Street in Quincy. I am so thankful for Superintendent Peake addressing you this evening. We are fortunate to have a person like that in our city. And I would like to just concur with everything what Superintendent Peake had just said. It is a historic district, and the building looks like, and, and it has nothing to do with Victorian architecture. Perhaps the top floor has a few ideas of that. So thank you so much for totally opposed to that monster to be in this neighborhood. Thank you, opposing it.
Anyone else wishing to speak on this? Yes?
Hello, my name's Jocelyn Sedney. I live at 85 Monroe Road. I was very thankful to hear Superintendent Peake, and it's very difficult to follow her, because I think she had such great comments, one of which I thought was tremendous, which was perhaps to encourage Mr. O'Connell, who I do think has a great relationship with the mayor, to consider this as a perfect pocket park for the John Quincy Adams statue and monument. So close to the other Adams facility, it would be great, but that's probably a dream. I was trying to think of what seemed different about this building or that made it so it didn't really fit the place. And when we looked at the first photograph that showed the view of the building from the Adams site, it looked like a prison to me first. But it's, it's because it's so massive, and it's white, and it just seems to stand out in terms of that area. I think that if the property, if the building could have been situated in the back as opposed to right smack in your face, it's almost like in-your-face. And if it could come down another level. I think to compare that height of that building with a cupola or a spire or an A-frame roof is simply misleading. That, that's a big building. It's not massive, but it's, it's, it's big. There's no division, like you can see in the houses beyond that in the A-frame buildings. The, Mr. Sweeney's funeral home has. The, Mr. Sweeney's funeral home has division and has interesting, you know, features at the top. That's not this building. So to perhaps situate it further to the back, which I think would give them more space, and to take off the top of that, that building, I think would, would be better. My concern would be that there's this building, if you approve this building, someone's going to buy the building where McKay's is, or else whoever owns McKay's is going to say, okay, this is prime for development. We're going to build apartments over commercial, like everybody else is doing now. McKay's can be on the bottom floor, apartments above. And instead of saying, showing this building compared to a Coppola or a steeple, you're going to see that development compared to this building. And it's going to, it's a slippery slope. It's going to march right down this area. It's going to impede not just the, the neighborhood, but it's going to affect that historical site. So I think it's important to pay attention to what you do today and realize that it's not just the decision for today, it's a decision for tomorrow, too. And to, to try and, and work with the Neighbours and with the historic, historical people who are involved in this to maybe cite it in a way so it's not like in-your-face. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Anyone else? Councillor Ash?
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Richard Ash, 7 Silver Street, Ward Two City Councillor. This is not an easy one, and you have heard from quite a few people tonight, and I'm sure each of you has your, a, pieces of the opinions that have just preceded me, as well as Attorney Tachio's presentation and your own thoughts to sit with to decide what to do. And I have been pondering and wondering myself for the better part of the year. I hosted three community meetings with the assistance of Ward Four Councillor Divine and Ward Five Councillor Mintin. This particular lot sits very close to their respective wards as well. January 18th of this year, we had 80 people. In May, there was about 50, and then a week ago, we had 40 people in attendance. Meetings were spirited and opinionated. As you all saw the original proposal beginning of the year, I'll save, save those issues. A number of them were addressed. All of the residents were happy when the proposal was withdrawn, not that they didn't want to see something in this property at this, on this parcel, but that they thought they would, that, they thought that the developer and the team would come back with something that was three stories, given that that was the largest issue at the community meetings. I enjoy this, this design. I think they, Attorney Tachio and Mr. O'Connell and, and their team really did address a number of the issues, and I can certainly appreciate the Mansar roof, the design, the visual aspect of it. Unfortunately, the residents still think it's just too tall. Forty-four feet with the comps, I'll say. Attorney Tachio cited to 160 Franklin. He, he mentioned that the actual height of the mass of, the height of the building is on, is not sitting on Franklin, but the street behind it, which may have been Bradford. But similar argument with One Independence Ave and the steeple, we're taking the tallest point of these buildings as compared to the, the, the height all around in the mass of this building. And unfortunately, given the mass and the lack of the setback, although the design is great, I really appreciate the cantilever. It seems like they're willing to work with the residents on green space, on trees. The, the parking, I would defer to, to you all on, on your parking, what you got, what, what each member thinks on the parking. I understand each neighborhood is different. This is a large, lively group of residents. The meetings are very well-attended. They all would like to see a proposal here. And I know some of them probably in, in disagreement with Attorney Tachio, some of them probably do love that auto shop, but maybe not visually. So they really would want to see something of this caliber, of this nature on a smaller scale. And a couple of those suggestions have been floated around. I really do want to, though, commend the team, the owners, developers, attorneys, to come back with a proposal that addresses 80%, 90% of the issues that the residents had is commendable. It's, they're easy to, easy to work with, a great team. My job, obviously, is to bring you all what I hear at that neighborhood meeting, so I think I have covered that, and I look forward to your decision. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak on this? Anyone else? No? Good. So I'll remind everybody, there are sign-in sheets here tonight. Attorney Tachio, I don't know if you want to respond, or you don't have to, I just figure I'd give you the opportunity. But I think we're going to continue it anyways.
Yeah, the, the department would recommend, since this is an open, typically we do two months, but we have seen this, the review departments have seen this before. The department has hired the same peer-review firm that did the original review. So right now, there is no continued cases for December. The department feels as though one-month continuance, that we can get the review documents into the board and obviously available for the public to pick this up in one month. So that would be December 18th, one-month continuance.
Motion to continue to the December, December 18th meeting.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much for your time. Thank you to the neighbors and also the councillor. Thank you.
Can we take just a five-minute break?
Yep.
Thank you.
Oh, we got three more.
Yeah.
I didn't get home to let my dog out. I'm like, oh my god.
That you opposed it?
All right. Oh, Ellie.
All right, so we're going to get started again, so if folks want to keep talking, they can go out into the hall.
Sure, go back to it.
Thank you. So the next item on the agenda is a new public hearing, 61 to 69 and 71 Hancock Street, Planning Board case number 2024-12. This public hearing shall be conducted to review the application of Tremont Quincy One LLC, 280 Summer Street, sixth floor, Boston, Mass. 02110, for site plan review under Quincy zoning ordinance tail 17, section 9.5.1, site plan review, and special permit under section 5.1.17, parking waiver. The applicant proposes the removal of the one-story commercial storefront building on Hancock Street and the construction of a new eight-story building consisting of 139 residential units, along with two levels of structured parking for 134 vehicles. The proposal will also include structured exterior space and amenity space for the residents, along with professional design, drainage controls, and landscaping. The property contains 35,935 square feet of land and is located at 61 to 69 and 71 Hancock Street. The subject property is located within a business C zoning district and shown on accessory's map 6168-L13 and 20.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney David Mahoney and I represent the applicant, Tremont Quincy One LLC. We're before the board tonight for the project which you just described, Madam Chair. This, to orient you to the site, this is if you're coming into Quincy from Boston over the Nippon River Bridge, on, on the right, there's a Domino's Pizza. This, this is that site. And this project may look a little familiar to you, because to refresh your memory, we were back in here with a larger project back in August of '21, a much larger project. That project didn't get built for a variety of reasons. We're coming out of COVID, interest rates were high, commodity prices were high, particularly lumber, so that, it, it didn't get built. I'll think you, I think you'll find this is a worthy successor to, to that project. On September 24th, just this past September 24th, we got a unanimous vote from the Zoning Board of Appeals for special permit and for several bulk and dimensional variances. I'd like to turn it over to the architect now to go through the presentation. We have a team of professionals here. Rob?
Thank you, David. I'm Madam Chair, member of the board. We appreciate your attention here. If you can slide onto this, yes, this slide. So what you see here on the screen right now is the site boundary is dotted in red. The site itself, as David started to mention, abuts Hancock Street to the northeast. It has Newbury Street to the northwest at the sort of primary intersection, and it rounds a corner toward a Nippon extension. And so most, most of the design and work we've done has really been about understanding that this is a true gateway from the northern, northern local places into Quincy, coming across the bridge. So really holding that intersection at Newbury and, and Hancock, and then also really sort of massing the building in a way that really affords opportunity for the tremendous views to the south toward the Nippon River, toward the northeast, toward the ocean and Wallaston Beach, and then toward the prime corner toward downtown Boston. If you'd like the next slide, please. This is a view looking directly from Hancock Street, the intersection of Newbury. You'll see our glass double-height entry right at the corner of Hancock and, and Newbury. We have a robust tree canopy and public realm and sidewalk scape along Hancock with a vegetative buffer that really helps sort of screen that from traffic. And we've oriented the entrance points along Newbury Street to limit any sort of stopping along Hancock Street. The design of the building really was inspired through sort of warm, natural colors, really thinking about the, the driftwood colors of the, the Nippon River trails, and then also the sort of warmer tones of a lot of the other buildings within the Quincy area. It's an eight-story building, approximately 139 residential units, and we have 134 parking spaces. If you go to the next slide here. So we have incorporated sort of two different tones of fiber cement material for the building to sort of break up the scale. You notice that we've sort of broken the building into sort of three distinctive zones, and this is as you're looking from Quincy, to really afford the opportunity for corner views, looking in and out, and also to really break down the massing of the building to make it feel a little bit sort of more residentially scaled. You'll see at the, the ground level, there's a robust tree canopy as well as a, a nice screening of the two levels of parking that align with the double-height lobby at the corner. Next slide, please. This is a more direct view, looking sort of frontally on to, from the, from the Hancock Street side. We have a number of different scaled elements, or sort of punctuations within the facade that have that sort of warmer drift tone, driftwood tone to them. And in certain moments, we've provided the opportunity for Juliet balconies for greater access and views from the site. And then you see, again, here at the bottom right, the, the, the double-height entrance glass lobby. Next slide. Yes, thanks. And this is a direct view looking along Newbury Street to the bottom-left corner. You see the entrance to the main lobby. In the middle, you see our loading access, which is off-street, and then just to the right of that, a garage parking entry and access point. And then along this side, the building actually gets great views toward the Nippon, or will get great views toward the Nippon River, so we have a number of Juliet balconies at the front onto that side. Next slide, please. So this is the first floor. You see in the top-left corner here is that lobby. So this is the first floor. You see in the top-left corner here is that lobby we've discussed, large double-height space, and then the balance of this particular floor is made up with our loading, our trash, and then approximately sixty-eight of the one hundred thirty-four parking spaces. And then along the back edge of the site, which I'm sure David will talk about a little bit more, we have a dog park which is accessed from the Hancock Street side as well as through the garage itself. Next slide, please. This is the second level of parking, the double-height lobby is along the corner, and we also have some leasing spaces that look down onto that primary lobby. Next slide. So this is our third floor where we have an amenities deck. This is above the parking level, and this is sort of southern-focused. It will have various amenities for the residents. There's also about a thirty-seven-hundred-square-foot amenity space that fronts onto that deck and residential terraces for the units that front onto it as well. Next slide, please. This is a typical upper-level residential floor. Like I said, one hundred and thirty-four units, approximately twenty-one percent of those are studios. Fifty-five, I think fifty percent are one-bedrooms, and then twenty-five percent are two-bedroom units. Next slide, please. So this is the top floor, the eighth floor of the building, which is similar to the floors below with the exception of a Sky Lounge, which is the front corner facing toward Hancock Street and Newbury Street, but also capturing views toward downtown Boston. And then on the top, you see a rooftop amenity deck that'll be an amenity for the residents that live there as well as zones in which we plan to screen the mechanical systems, making sure that they're out of view of people from down in the street. Next slide, please. So I will pass it now on to Sean to talk through civil.
Yes, thank you, Rob. Good evening, members of the board. I'll give a brief presentation on the civil, and then if there's any questions at the end, we can walk through those. But as you can see, the existing site here today, a series of commercial buildings, a single-story, I mean, a single-family residential. The majority of the site is impervious pavement. The buildings themselves are well into the right-of-way, leaving little room for sidewalks and improvements. That's just been through a series of takings over time. The single-family house has been removed at this point, but it's just remains kind of a vacant gravel fenced-off lot. So this whole area is really ripe for a refresh and a development. Moving to the next slide. So as you can see, you know, Rob kind of highlighted some of the building parts, but I wanted to talk a little bit about the site itself. By redoing and pulling the building back from where they exist, almost eight feet into the right-of-way now where we set it at the right-of-way, it gives us a nice corridor along the front of the project where it's an opportunity, where it's really wide there. It's not just a standard five-foot sidewalk. We've got a ten-foot sidewalk and then a planting strip, and then the curb for the roadway allowing us for some of those really large trees in that buffer. And that also allows us to get a nice sidewalk all the way from the left of the plan by Denzmore Street to the Newport Ave extension, all the way across the front, and then all the way down Newbury Street as well to provide a continuation for any future developments in that area. So it really frames the street, and with landscaping, they can explain a lot of the features that are there that really make it an attractive corridor. Another part I just wanted to highlight on that sheet as well is that loading. The off-street loading that Robin mentioned is for a thirty-foot, single-unit box truck to be able to back into the building and be completely off the right-of-way. In the previous plan, we had a series of kind of pull-offs for drop-offs, pickups, move-ins. With this feature, we'll get all that right off of Newbury Street so you won't have a moving truck sitting there for three hours with people are moving stuff in. It just really cleans up that corridor. And then just south of that would be the main entrance for all the vehicles entering and exiting the building. And then just touching on the parking a little bit, you know, one hundred and thirty-four spaces, we are asking for a special exception. We're right about one space per unit, you know, given the type of development here where this has got some smaller units in it in the proximity to downtown. We feel that's a good ratio, a point nine-six spaces per unit. We also will have or ask for a special exception for some of the reduction in allowed compact spaces. So with this development, we do have some opportunity where there are spots where the spaces are slightly smaller, eight-by-eighteen versus nine-by-eighteen. So even though it is a compact and eight-by-eighteen, we feel it's still a good-size parking space. And what the intent of that was is to try to fit as many parking spaces within that building to drive up that ratio as we could. Then moving to the next sheet is the grading and drainage. So this site, as it exists today, it basically sits on top of a hill. The center of the site is the highest point in the surrounding area, and everything flows off untreated, uncontrolled, in all four directions, down Hancock Street, down Newbury Street, and then to the south to the abutting property. And what we've heard through some of the public comment with zoning is there is some flooding, tidal flooding down towards further north on Hancock Street. And so the intent of the design with this project, you know, we are elevated and this site is up out of the flood zone. The flood zone is around elevation ten. The building for this site is around elevation sixteen, so we are six feet above it. We are at the high point, but we did put a lot of consideration into the drainage to account for that. You know, the vast majority of that water now just goes straight into the road, down the street, into the city system and contributes to that. And so what we did with this design is all the water coming off of the roof goes into the series. You see those four tanks to the left. We have another smaller one up to the north. And what those would be is just big, large, underground, concrete detention structures. The total volume of those would be like almost thirty-five thousand square feet, so probably the size of almost this room itself. And what that will do is just allow all that water to fill those tanks and then be controlled, you know, released at a controlled rate so that we're not inundating that downstream system. It would all tie back into the system in the same locations, but those tanks will really slow the runoff and help reduce some of the, you know, the existing impacts that are there today. And then the remaining drainage for the courtyard, the elevated courtyards, the green roofs, and the dog park area will go into a series of dry wells, which will provide groundwater recharge back into the site, you know, the best that we can. And then those will flow off-site at a reduced rate as well. So all in compliance with Mass DEP stormwater standards for redevelopment project. We're above and beyond with the groundwater recharge and overall a substantial improvement compared to what's there today. Flipping to the next sheet, just simple utilities here. Everything's pretty much in place on Hancock Street. Water would just connect to the existing system. Sewer runs in an easement, city sewer just at the back of the property. We would just tie into that. Electric, telecom, gas would all come off the eastern corner of the building there to the existing utilities, and then the transformer would just be hidden in the landscape there. And then next sheet for lighting. So again, this would be LED decorative street lighting along the front, kind of staggered in between the trees, and then a series of LED downlighting wall packs just to illuminate the sidewalk around the building. Again, this would all be incorporated, you know, with the building lighting package, so it all matches as we get into the building permit and further down. But for now, this is the general intent of the lighting. And at this point, I can turn it over to Dave to talk about some of the landscaping features we have.
Thanks. Good evening. I'm David Walsh for the landscape architectural firm of Hamill Walsh Design. We actually have three levels of landscaping. We have the street level, we have the third-floor amenities deck, and then the roof terrace as well. This is the layout material sheet. And as you can see along Hancock, we have a series of colored concrete paving patterns, and the edge of Hancock is edged with a raised, six-inch raised granite planter and extending down to the dog park. We have a double gate so the dogs don't get out. And we have an area of artificial turf so the dogs can play on that as well. And there'll be a hose there so all can be hosed out. Our next slide? The planting, all the planting areas are irrigated. That's number one, both on the street and all the upper levels as well. And along Hancock, we have five-and-a-half-inch trees specified. Those are autumn spire red maples. And five-and-a-half inches is that big around, and typically about three-and-a-half inches is its size. And to get those kind of trees in there, we only have about fifteen feet from the face of the building, so you have to specify something that's tall and narrow, and that's what these red maples do. And we have planting along the edge of Hancock is ornamental grasses that are cut back in the winter so the snow can plow up. And down on the dog park, we have, that's a south-facing area, so it's going to get hot. So we have an American elm and a flowering cherry tree as well to provide some scale and shade. We also have planting along the transformer area on Hancock. And as you saw from the architectural slides, we have living walls as well, landscape panels on the walls. Next slide. So this is the third-floor amenity terrace. We have private patios, green roof on top of the community room, pool area, and then a trellis for outdoor cooking and whatnot. And the area looking down to the south will be the view of the Napa River, so any plant in there has to stay low. Next slide? This is the planting plant. It shows the different paper maples. And again, all of the ornamental grasses along the edge on the south are going to be low, so you can sit there and look out and not see the parking lot below, but you can see out to the river. Next slide? And the roof terrace is a place that we have kind of a zen-type of a garden quality to it. And the area where we can put raised planters, which would be anchored to the roofs that don't blow away, obviously, with the fire pit. And then in season, we bring out furniture into the open areas. Next slide? One thing to notice, detail number five, we're going to have structural soil along Hancock that will allow the roots to grow out and also support the pavement. Now, we did this on Rose Kennedy Greenway. All of the, on top of the tunnel, we have structural soil developed by Cornell University, and it allows the roots to grow out fifteen, twenty feet and also support the load on the pavement. And there's a detail, number thirteen, is the detail of the living fence, living wall. And all of the gravel is going to be riverstone, so there's no mulch. It will let the irrigation drip down into the mulch. Next slide? And I guess that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Senate in terms of?
That concludes the presentation, Madam Chair. The team is here for questions.
Sure. Thank you. If you may have any questions.
You want to go first?
Yeah.
I was digging through my old plans and I came across the original plan here. And I was looking at this one comparing. This is a much better version, I think. I like the way you described why your, the color scheme, how it came about. I think this, even though the other project was good for the area, I think this would be fitting a little better. The other one was a little big, but this one is going to fit in nice as you're coming down off the Napa River, as you're coming into the city of Quincy. It's going to really look nice. I like the way it's laid out, and I like the sidewalk and all that, and I think it's going to be a nice. I just drove by there yesterday and pulled over, and I looked at it, and it is an eyesore right now. So when you come into the city, it's going to definitely, definitely make a big improvement. I just want to say I commend the team for doing this, and just my spiel. I know you haven't heard, but some of the other guys did, but there's plenty of men and women in the city of Quincy that would love to work on a project of this magnitude, especially since we're going to be transforming the way we come into the city. So please consider hiring someone that can put men and women of the city of Quincy to work. That's all I have, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Members, Sean, I think?
So there's one hundred and thirty-nine units. How many two-bedroom units are there? Not percentage-wise, but actual numbers. Please. Just tell me, how many bedrooms are in there, and give me a parking spot for each one? What does that come out to?
So it's one hundred and seventy-four beds in the building and one hundred and thirty-four parking spaces.
Because right around the corner from you guys, on Commander Shea Boulevard, forever since they built that, this car is parked out right as it make the turn there, right onto the public street, and they've been there forever. So I wonder, and I don't know the exact parking ratios, I'm sorry, I'm not like an expert on that, but no parking for guests, not a parking spot for each bedroom. I'm wondering, where would like any extra cars go?
So Jacob Stark?
Yep. Could you just speak at the podium? Thank you.
Jacob Stark, I'm with Tremont Quincy One, the LLC, the applicant. What we've been seeing in the market is that for rental housing like this that has proximity to public transit like the Red Line and rapid transit bus stops in the area, the ratio we're seeing that renters are actually going towards is closer to point eight-five to nine, point nine stalls per unit. And so we're a little above that at point nine-eight. We will be using some of the spaces for building services and for guests, and so we won't be entirely devoid of that. And we feel that, given the use of ride-share, of public transit, and the decline in car ownership, we'll be fine with the current number of parking stalls in the building.
That's a good answer. Thank you. Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair.
One question for you, forgive me. On Newbury Street, my dog goes to Hancock Animal Hospital right across the street. And I saw that the loading dock, the garage, I'm assuming you can't turn around, so you're backing up. What's the, I mean, because there's a parking lot right on, alongside Hancock Animal. Is that enough space to maneuver that turn for the trucks coming in and out? Sorry, I haven't looked at you.
Yeah, no, that's all right. If you want to go to sheet C five on the civil, I believe it's C five, yeah, right there. So as you can see, those kind of curved lines there, those would be the turning movements for that. So that would be well within the twenty-two-foot width of the pavement there, and then well out of that parking lot. You can see the, kind of the dash line even further outside of that is the right-of-way.
Parking spots for?
Correct. Yep, so that could all be maneuvered within that street section, not impacting the animal.
Great. No, I just act like a member of Kelly's comments. I think this is a nice-looking project for this site, and yeah, that's all I got. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Any other questions?
Yeah, thank you. I agree. This is a much nicer project. I appreciate you taking into consideration the gateway aspect. You know, it's so important right there coming in. It's going to look so much better. Council Mahoney, you may remember that in the original proposal, this Commonwealth actually approved the traffic plan for that building. It wasn't just a city. The state did a study, you know, so that bodes well, that they approved that structure, you know. And one, I might have missed it. Have you determined these are going to be condos or apartments? Apartments, okay, thank you for that. And one last thing, not to give you a sales pitch, and that are an opportunity for your future residents, but you mentioned the T and the buses. The city's making great strides with ferry service right at the end of Commander Shea Boulevard. Take it right out to Scornpoint Park, to the diligence of the mayor's office. We got Congressman Lynch, four-point-two million dollars a couple of weeks ago for a new pier. So you're going to be real close to that as well. So I think this is great. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. So I do just have a couple of questions. So on the Level One plan, the Level Two plan, I thought I saw tandem parking spaces, but I just don't know if I'm, so what is kind of the game plan of how those are going to work and operate?
Yes, our intent is to lease the tandem stalls solely to the two-bed units, so there's not going to be any valet on-site. There are, I believe, five here, and then I think a few more on the next, on the second floor as well. Yeah, so those two. So we have seven total, well, under the number of two beds we have, and we think there'll be enough people that will be fully utilizing those just within two-bed units.
Okay. So you'll be leasing, I guess, specific, those specific spaces to those specific units?
Yeah, and that will probably just happen as a first-come, first-served basis for two-bed units that move into the building. I'll let the management team who operates the building figure that out, but each of the units, each of the stalls will be numbered, and when someone rents a unit and they want to rent parking, they will be assigned a stall.
Okay. And then, okay, so you referenced, you know, public transit and things like that. It seems like it's a little bit of a walk over to public transit, so I didn't know if you are proposing any kind of shuttle service. I know I used to live at Mariel, and they had shuttle service.
Yes, Madam Chair. On the other project, there's a shuttle that goes from Napa Landing to the T Station. And Mr. Slater, who was the managing principal of Tremont Asset Management, spoke, he's not here tonight, so I can't ask him specifically, but I know he has spoken about getting involved in that shuttle service, and we talked about that for the last project.
Okay, all right. All right, and just one, I guess, positive comment. We don't often see loading docks, and people kind of try to utilize every square inch, and it's really nice to see, you know, some care be taken and design and intentionality to get trucks off the street and with deliveries and things like that, so I like that feature. I don't know if anybody has any other questions or, okay. All right, so let's open it up for public comment, if that's okay with you, Attorney Mahoney. Mahoney. Is anyone here wishing to speak on this project for or against? We also have sign-in sheets, so if you don't want to come up and speak, you're welcome to sign in as well. Yes?
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is DJ McKinnon. I'm from Atlantic Development. I'm one of the partners in the Abbey Development, which is just around the corner from this development. I'd just like to say, I think this would be very complimentary to what we have done. I think it's a good development for the area. It's well thought out, very good development team, excellent local council. And no, I think it'd be a great development for the city, so I just want to speak in favor. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on this project? Okay. So I think we still need to undertake peer reviews, that correct?
Yeah, sort of, Madam Chair, through you to the board. This is the second project in a row that's kind of come back to us, as we heard. The prior one was more or less the same. This one is a bit different. And I think the engineering sensitivity, especially with stormwater and traffic, I would recommend this go out two months to the January 15th meeting, which is one of the reasons we approved the calendar upfront. So I think that would give the review department, and I would also add, Fussin' O'Neill was the peer reviewer. We're going with the same peer review firm again. So we're hopeful to be able to engage with their design team pretty quickly on the back and forth. But again, this is a new approach versus what was approved a few years back. So it's not sort of picking it up and dusting off the old plans. It's a fresh look at the site. But the recommendation again would be out to two months to January.
Okay. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, we make a motion that we move it out to the January 5th meeting?
15th.
15th, I'm sorry, 15th.
Second that.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Sorry? I mean, we didn't close the public hearing. I guess we continue it up. We continue the public hearing.
Correct.
Yeah. No, we did not close it. We continued it. Yeah. Okay. So the next item on the agenda is a new public hearing again. It's 150, 152, and 156 Quincy Street, Planning Board Case Number 2024-11. This public hearing shall be conducted to review the application of Neighbor Works Housing Services of South Shore, Inc., 422 Washington Street, Quincy, Mass., 02169, for site plan review under Quincy Zoning Ordinance Title 17, Section 9.5.1, Site Plan Review, and special permit under Sections 5.1.17, Parking Waiver. The applicant proposes the demolition of the existing single and two-family homes and the construction of a new building consisting of 24 residential units, along with surface parking for a total of 12 spaces. The proposal will also include a professional-designed drainage controls and landscaping. The property contains 13,217 square feet of land and is located at 150, 152, and 156 Quincy Street. The subject property is located within an industrial A zoning district and shown on Accessor's Map, 3064 Lots 24, 3, and 41, Lots 2, 1, and A2. Good evening, Attorney Fleming.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. For the record, my name is Edward Fleming. I'm here on behalf of Neighbor Works Housing Services of the South Shore, Inc., the applicant. I'm joined tonight by Rob Corley and Tim Doherty from Neighbor Works, also Jim Burke and from DeSalle Burke Sala Engineering. Jim will talk about the engineering in a moment. And Michael Marata, the architect on this project from Westwork. And Michael will talk more about the architectural matters. As you indicated, this project involves three different parcels, property at 150, 152, and 156 Quincy Street. Presently, those properties consist of a single-family house on 150, a single-family house on 152, and a three-family house on 156 Quincy Street. The property is zoned industrial A. We are seeking site plan review under a particular section of the site plan review ordinance, which is Section 9.1.5.4, which is a provision that actually provided for the review of projects that have protection afforded by the Dover Amendment. This is an educational facility, and we'll get into that in more detail in a moment, that provides this particular proposal with the protections of 40A, Section 3. As I indicated, this is three parcels of land. In total, the property is about 13,217 square feet. The proposal that's before you tonight, which the architect will get into in more detail, Mike will get into more detail, provides for the construction of 24 residential units. Those will be studio efficiency-style affordable units with parking on-site for 12 parking spaces. The building will be four stories in height, as you can see in the rendering. And the parking spaces will be provided right on-site, along with landscaping amenities and also drainage controls that Jim will talk about in more detail. This particular proposal, as indicated, is afforded the protection of 40A, Section 3, because of the educational component of this proposal. This property is being designed and built for low-income clientele or residents. Those folks are going to be provided with services by Neighbor Works and affiliate companies whereby they'll be provided classes and educational on personal finance matters, budgeting, nutrition, and other related matters, teaching these folks how to live independently on their own. There will be an office on-site that will be housed by a member of Neighbor Works team. And that individual will be responsible for the educational classes that will be provided to the residents. That educational component provides really the protection under 40A, Section 3. Neighbor Works, as you know, is very well-known in the city, has been working in the city for over 40 years. And Rob can certainly speak about Neighbor Works' work in the city over those years. They've provided and created affordable housing, which is incredibly needed in this atmosphere and this environment. This particular housing development will provide for folks that are essentially coming out of homelessness and being afforded homes for the first time, hence why the educational component is an important part of the plan. So with that introduction, I'd like to turn this over to Jim Burke. I'll let Jim kind of talk about the engineering-related matters. Then I'll ask Michael Marata to talk about the architectural provisions. And then Rob and Tim are here to answer any questions about Neighbor Works and the overall proposal for this particular building. Jim?
Good evening. My name is Jim Burke. I'm a civil engineer with DeSalle Burke Sala, offices here in Quincy. And we're involved with another Neighbor Works project, and I'm glad to say that I am. We are looking at, Joe, you can push forward. Perfect, perfect. Even existing conditions, as Ed was saying earlier, with three structures, two single-family homes and a multi, sitting on about 13,000 square feet total. The significant piece of this parcel or parcels is the impact of floodplain. Believe it or not, you're in the floodplain for Town Brook, elevation 30, and all three lots are contained within that. We did have to go see conservation, and we did receive an order of conditions already, so we're proceeding in that course. Next slide, Joe. What we have is, you know, a construction management plan for the demolition and the like. And we've got erosion control and stone aprons and whatever was needed really for the construction management, taking down those buildings and actually put up what Neighbor Works is going to be proposed. Next, please. So what you're looking at is about 3,500 square foot building. Is that correct, Mike? 3,500? So, and with a parking area of 12 spaces. 24 units in the building itself. You'll see the ramps for handicap accessibility out front. And the building itself is a foot above floodplain. Next slide, Joe. There's, you know, the grading plan. You can see how the spot grades around the parking lot are kind of set in the corners and the like. And what we did is we created a floodplain, additional floodplain in that parking area. So we raised the building up, took it out of floodplain, and actually put the parking lot in the 100-year floodplain to provide an additional, where is it? About over 2,000 cubic feet of additional flood storage. So it's a benefit from that perspective for the neighbors. Next slide, Joe. And an additional benefit is the stormwater control. You can see that there's 36 4x4x4 concrete chambers underneath the parking lot. Now, it's significant in size because we didn't have an overflow. There's nothing to tie that drainage into. So what we're doing is that we're containing the 100-year vet on-site. Soil's out there pretty good. You're getting fine sand, so you're getting a decent rate. So basically, the runoff coming out of the site is next to zero. And you'll have some runoff in the front of the building and the like, the building's tied into it as well. So the stormwater is a significant benefit to this project as well. Pre-placing the water supply, 8-inch, no, I'm sorry, 6-inch fire, 2-inch domestic, and a brand-new sewer. And that's basically civil aspects of the project. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Mike Marata from Westwork Architects. So I'll take you briefly through the site plans and the building plans. So as Ed had mentioned, we have 12 parking spaces for this property. We also have a few site amenities. To the rear of the building, we'll have a patio for the residents. That'll be at-grade and will be accessible. Both entries are accessible for the site. We've got a front entry ramp for the accessibility as well as two parking spaces. And the other site amenities we have are bike racks that will be covered, and that's over to the upper left of the parking area. And the last site amenity we have is the trash enclosures. And those are sited right at the back of the parking area. Those should be very accessible to take the trash in and out. The next slide. So we will be providing full landscaping for the site. We'll be adding about four trees to the front of the property. And it will be fully landscaped out with indigenous planting materials that will not take a lot of water. We'll also be having a generator for the project that'll be at the rear of the property. It will be screened. So this is the first floor plan. There are 24 units in total. The first floor will have three of those units, and two of those will be accessible. So at the bottom of the building there, you have your vestibule. There'll be the two resident offices there. And then there'll be a small entry lobby with the mail space. And then toward the rear of the project, we'll have, of the building, we'll have the laundry space, and that's adjacent to the patio that'll be used by the residents. Next slide. So the floor plans are pretty typical. There'll be seven units per floor. These are studio efficiency units. They're just under 300 square feet each. The way we like to set up those units is when you walk in off the corridor, you have, it's actually an adaptable bathroom because it's an elevator building. And then we've got a small kitchenette for the residents, and then a room for a bed, a room for one chair, and two closets. And that's pretty typical for each of these studio units. So that's floors two and three. We can go to the next slide. The fourth floor is the same layout, and then you can see the roof plan. We decided to go with a pitched and a flat roof for this building. The flat portion of the roof will hide all the mechanical, it'll screen all the mechanicals from the street views. And we liked having the pitched roof to blend in a little bit more with the neighborhood architecture. And we'll go next to some renderings. So this is the rendering from Quincy Street. Again, you can see this is actually the landscaping that we've proposed. Of course, we'll have all-new sight lighting as well, slungs and bollards. The architecture, we wanted to, of course, make sure we were keeping it in, you know, in the neighborhood vernacular. But we want a little bit of a modern edge to it. And we've done clambered sidings, and then the first floor is tech wood siding, which is a nice composite siding, and it doesn't fade, which I really like. Next slide, please. So this is another view from the corner. This is now catching the flat roof with the parapet. And this is looking back into the neighborhood street. And then we'll take a look at the next rendering, please. This is probably the rendering I like the most. This is with your back closer to Water Street. And you can see with the triple-deckers, as you go down the street, this is how the building would be as you walked down the street. And I think it fits very well into the neighborhood. I really like this view. It really, really stands out as a building. It has a nice presence, but it fits very well into the neighborhood. I think we can stop there and go for questions.
I just wanted to highlight the parking ratio. Although the parking ratio is quite different than, you know, the market rate ratios that were presented in the earlier meetings, this was done for a reason because the Neighbor Works actually operates a building of very similar nature that services a very similar affordable housing population. And in that particular development, there are no cars owned by the residents. And that's due to the income levels of the residents. So really, this parking, these parking spaces will be created for, in the event that someone were to have a car, but also for the staff that will operate the building and the educational uses within the facility. So that's our presentation. Mr. Corley's here. Rob, you want to say something about Neighbor Works?
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name's Rob Corley. I'm the CEO of Neighbor Works Housing Solutions. And this property here, actually, we've been operating Quincy for, since 1981. Our original offices were actually on the corner of Water Street and Quincy Street. Actually, from this view is where our office is originally, where we're now on 422 Washington Street in Quincy Point. The three-family, the three-story building on this street was the first property we ever purchased back in the early 90s. And the single-family homes have been used for this exact population, along with the three-family, for decades. So we've had unrelated individuals, older women and men coming out of homelessness living in these properties for over 15 to 20 years now. This development is very exciting to us because it is a building with an elevator. It creates more density. It's a more efficient unit, a better unit. Each unit has its own bathroom, which provides a more dignified existence for our residents. We have, as was mentioned, similar properties all across the city, including one we opened just a year and a half ago in Quincy Point that is nearly identical to this one. And as was mentioned, there was zero, there's zero cars there, as you can imagine, coming out of homelessness. That's not necessarily in the carts. So we think we've been a good neighbor on the street for a very long time. We think this is sort of the evolution of the type of housing that we want to see created in the city for this population, and very excited to answer any questions you have about this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions?
I just have one question. I mean, it's well-needed for the low-income housing, but just refresh my memory. I thought the one in Quincy Point, didn't you have like a resource area that people could go to and think they could help get assistance? Didn't you have that in the Quincy Point one?
Yeah, so in the Quincy Point, we have, we have one residential, sorry, one office space there and a community room in that development. And what we have really started to see is that that community room is not being utilized by the residents, as we would hope or think. And so this is actually another version or evolution in that where we'd rather have the unit or units on the ground floor as opposed to making a community room that isn't even being used. So the need for the housing is so important that we feel like it's a better use. So we have two offices and not that large community space.
Just my memory, I was just trying to back on my memory.
You got it right.
Very well answered question, so I get it. And thanks for putting up the affordable housing.
Yeah, no, you're welcome. And you're right, there is a room like that.
I just want to say, you know, great, congratulations. I think it's a great thing that you're doing. I mean, we do need it, for sure. It looks nice. Looks very nice.
Well, I'll ask some questions. It looks great. I commend what you're doing, but I do have questions. So screening of the parking areas, they're going to be fencing?
We don't have fencing right now. We can go to, if you want to go all the way to the site plan, Joe, to the front. So we don't have, we just have the low fencing. Maybe we actually can go to the rendering at the front, the first rendering. There you go. I actually think it's not in this rendering because you see it in the site plan. You will have a low, but it's a low fence that would be at the front, right, right here.
Oh, I think that that looks nice. I'm more concerned with the neighboring properties on the sides. I don't know if they're right.
This is all new, so we rebuild the fence all the way back and be able to see the other neighbor.
Go ahead, Tim. I was just going to say we'll have a stockade fence.
Could you just stand to speak? Thank you.
Tim Doherty with NeighborWorks Housing Solutions.
Thank you.
And so just as you see the stockade fence on that side, that will run the perimeter of the property.
Okay. Okay, great. Snow storage on site? Snow storage?
Snow storage?
Could you just, sorry?
They'll be using, when the green space available. Can, yeah. Next, yeah, that'll work. You'll see that there's some snow storage up front a little bit, and there's some snow storage in the rear as well, behind the dumpsters and the transformer.
So how does, I guess, how does one get the snow behind the dumpsters and the transformer?
You'll have to, you know, push it and manage it and snow blow it over.
Yeah, I just add that from a management perspective, we'll have so few cars in this parking lot, we'll be able to create snow storage within a couple parking spaces if necessary.
The dumpster, I saw one of the renderings, it looked like it was open in the front. Is that going to be swinging open? Like, I mean, there it looks like it's shielded. I just wanted to confirm that.
The rendering shows the doors open, but they'll basically be closed.
Okay. And then what's the height of the building? I know we said four stories.
It's 48 feet, but that's to the, the highest peak is 48 feet.
48 feet?
Yeah.
What's the height of the three-story that's down the street that you use in the renderings?
That, the three-story just to the left, I think is a little over 38 feet.
38 feet?
Yeah.
And there's a property in between those two structures, that single-family residence? Between, yes.
Yes.
And that's not owned by NeighborWorks? Okay.
I believe there's a, there's a new, there was a new development also permitted across the street that's significantly taller too than the other structures. I'm not sure, Rob, if you remember that building that was permitted on that street. I think it's probably a four-story structure. Is it three?
Parking underneath.
With parking under. So parking under with three stories above. So it'll be another four-story building across the street. And then the extra space storage is actually right behind this facility as well. On, right at the, on Liberty.
Yep. Yep, okay. And then I was just, just out of curiosity. So you mentioned the Dover Amendment. I'm kind of interested in it, just as kind of a zoning person. So are there classes being offered on site? Is there an educational component on the property?
Yes, so it's, every resident has a case manager, and those meeting rooms are where they have individual case management sessions and providing them with life skills on how to basically rebuild their lives and stabilize.
Yep, so that's offered on site?
That's offered on site.
And is it all one-on-one, or is it kind of, are there more, like, I think?
Well, within the neighborhood and within the community here, we have more group opportunities for folks. But typically, we find the population does tend, as was stated earlier, about common space, that the one-on-one is the most effective way to provide the training and education.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I think that's all I had for questions. So this is a public hearing, so I did just want to open it up to the public. Is there anyone here wishing to speak for or against this project? Sir? And while you come up, I'll just let everybody know that we do have sign-in sheets, so you can sign in if you're for or against the project. You are so inclined.
I'm back. Trimmed down, 167 Babcock Street. And I just want to give you my support for this project, anything Mr. Corley wants to do. And I think maybe if he could name it after his old boss, Mr. Grania, Norm Grania. The Grania House has a nice ring, doesn't it? Norm Grania, New Orleans years of service. I think I worked on Rob with his first project on Morton Street.
That's great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else here wishing to speak on this application? Councilman Devine?
Good evening. James Devine, 117 Cross Street. About a year, maybe a year and a half ago, I was on Winter Street when they were having a ribbon cutting for the one that we keep talking about. And it was so impressive. And it's amazing to think that the 24 small units, some people would think they're so small, but to each one of those individuals, the pride, the dignity, the safety that they feel is unbelievable. And I said, if you have anything like this in Ward 4, please tell me. Well, about seven months later, I got a phone call and said, were you serious? I'm like, yeah, of course I am. So this is beautiful. It's exactly what we should be doing as much as we can. The parking, clearly not an issue because these people really do not have the ability to buy cars mostly. So I'm really excited for it. I'm glad it's hopefully coming to a complete fruition. And I give it 110% support. I think it's beautiful. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak on this application? Sir?
My name's Rudy. I'm the next-door neighbor. Here. So I'm really glad to see that beautiful picture, still just a picture of the beauty.
If you could just, yeah, just address the comments.
It's a beautiful picture of the building and wonderful. Also, I heard a little bit about your intention for usage of this place. That's also, you know, good in the sense of, you know, helping these people. And as a matter of fact, I'm currently a good friend of current residents living there. Okay, they are very nice people, and we are good friends. So my question are the following. It's for my sort of security or whatever, right, safety. First is that I'm lame in terms of construction, so I don't know how much of groundwork or underground work, how much that would, you know, shaking of the ground, how much would that affect or damage my house there, right? So since you are, you know, the watchdog for private citizens like me, you know, sitting in the Quincy City Hall, I hope you can send your professional, like inspector or engineer or whatever. I know nothing about that. Someone should visit the site and sort of like benchmark. You know, my house is not perfect, but you know, it's current condition. You have to benchmark it, and you have to tell them, warn them not to, you know, damage my house. And then after the project, you have to sort of like measure against the benchmarks. They say, ah, you damaged, you have to pay, you know, things like that, okay? That's, that's what I want, okay? Secondly, originally, I was worried about, you know, they're going to build a high building and block my sunshine. It looks like they are here, and here is a space, and this is only three floors. I think, you know, fair enough. As long as you consider my sunlight there, it's good, okay? However, now you have this parking here. Currently, we only have a fence here. But I don't know how you're going to do with it. This is an old iron, you know, that kind of fence. I don't know how you're going to replace it, by what. But my concern is that we never have cars moving around here, so you better have some solids in here, block it, that, you know, if this person is a new driver, drunk driver or whatever, couldn't, you know, cross the wall here. So you better have a solid wall here to protect me in that sense.
Yeah.
And I guess, other than that, I don't have other concerns, except they do mention something I like. They said they will have some educational section of this. That's great. I don't know about this current residents because they have been there for 20 years or 10 years. And they're really good, you know, as I said, we're friends. But I don't know when they first came on site, what kind of condition or shape there are. And this round, I checked with my neighbors. They all want to, you know, be able to move back and stay, but they cannot for whatever reason. So now you're going to introduce new people like that. So to have an educational section, part element there is great. But whether you have that person just as an office person, have an office there for eight hours a day, or you would have her or him live in one of the units there so that even during night, if anything happened, I can, you know, get some help from some person on site. That's my view, sir, okay? A great teacher was there during the day, and she disappeared. And then at nighttime, I really don't know what happened. So I hope you will keep or retain one unit for your education there or manager there. Then I would certainly feel more comfortable, right?
Great, thank you so much. Appreciate it. So I just wanted to respond. So they are putting in a solid fence. They testified that they were putting in a stockade fence around. Yes, yep, yep, that was the testimony. I don't think there needs to be any pre-survey. There's no blasting. Yeah, so the work that they're proposing to do, they don't need to do any sort of survey of your property or anything like that. Sometimes, given, you know, what somebody's proposing to do, you might have to go out and survey the neighboring properties, see if any damage. Their work doesn't kind of meet that threshold, so there's no kind of pre-survey.
I just need the inspector to, to allow, to tell me, piece of her professional opinion and do something, you know, professional.
Yeah, I think that you could pursue kind of a private thing if you wanted to document the status of your house. But from the city, the public perspective, there's noise control, there's dust control, rodent control. We add conditions into our decisions to make sure that, you know, neighbors are protected.
Can the city hall to talk with the inspector or engineer about it? Or how?
Once it's underway.
Yeah, once it's, you know, once it's underway.
Correct, yeah. Once a project's underway, the project transitions onto the oversight of the Inspection Services Department. So if there were concerns with construction work or parking or noise, you know, too early, you could contact the city's Inspection Services Department, and they'll reach out to the proponent.
So you mean I should wait until they start the project?
Correct. Yes.
Thank you for your attention.
You're welcome.
Councilman Devine? Thank you.
I just wanted to let the gentleman know that I am a city councilor and that I'll give him my contact number, and then I will work closely with him to make sure that everything is copacetic.
Perfect, thank you. Thank you for coming up.
I just want to reiterate that we'll work with the neighbor to make sure that during the construction process that, you know, he's aware of everything going on and address any of his concerns as it goes. And as far as where, we have property management 24/7 with all of our properties, but not on-site here 24/7. The unit will be made available to one of the residents and not the management team.
Yeah, but Rob, just to add on that, you know, you own and operate a number of properties here in the city for this clientele. So with the butters, I'm sure there's a call-in number, right?
That's correct.
That, you know, goes to central, you know, centrally located, and you guys can disperse resources 24/7 as needed.
That's correct. That's correct, Rob. Thank you.
Okay, so this project also subject to peer review?
Correct, yep. This is peer review, and this is a new open. So to give us ample time to do that review, two months to the January 15th meeting would be the department's recommendation.
Motion that we move this to the January 15th, 2025 meeting?
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. All right. The next item on the agenda, public hearing, major modification, 101 General McConville Way, Planning Board, Planning Board Case Number 2024 COC 01. This public hearing shall be conducted to review the application of Hanover RS Limited Partnership Care of Hanover Company 1 Marina Park Drive, Suite 701, Boston, Mass. 02210 for a Certificate of Consistency under the Quincy Center Urban Revitalization District Plan as amended and as defined within the Quincy Zoning Ordinance Title 17, Section 8.3, Quincy Center District, Quincy Center Urban Revitalization District, Urban Renewal Uses 9.3.3, Planning Board Rules and Regulations and 10 Definitions, and in accordance with Section 12.023, Section 2, Overall Redevelopment Strategy of the Quincy Center URDP as amended. The applicant requests the planning board to amend the Certificate of Consistency previously issued for the project, Case Number 2024 Certificate of Consistency 01, to reflect the reconfiguration of its residential component. The current proposal consists of a redesigned, new seven-story mixed-use building with 297 residential units, a reduction of four units from the approved project, and retail spaces originally proposed with parking at ground level. A 10-level municipal parking garage, in addition of two levels from the approved project, with the total of 995 parking spaces, will be constructed adjacent to the project. The proposal will also include structured exterior space and amenity space for the residents along with professionally-designed drainage controls and landscaping. The property consists, or excuse me, the property contains 122,011 square feet of land and is located at 95, 101, 119 and 153 parkingway, as well as the discontinued portion of parkingway by the Order of the City Council 2023 111, and a portion of the former Ross parking lot immediately south of the General's Bridge. The subject property is located within the Quincy Center Zoning District 15 as shown in part on assessors' map, 1148 lots 35, 67, and 68, and map 1165 lots 70 and 50. Attorney Mahoney.
Madam Chair, Attorney David Mahoney, and I represent Hanover RS Limited Partnership. As you recall, or you just mentioned, this COC was approved on February 21st, 2024. We're here tonight on a modification. My client and the city team, the Hanover team, have spent months reshaping the plan. It's a much more efficient and it's a much better-looking plan. And I'll have DJ McKinnon come up and make the presentation to you.
Thank you, Dave. DJ McKinnon again on our project. So I think most of you know the site. This is the former IHOP site. In fact, the IHOP is no longer there. Essentially, I'm going to walk to the plan, if that's okay? Can everybody hear me? My wife usually tells me I speak too loud anyway, so I'm going to speak up if anybody has any questions. The overall plan actually hasn't changed that much. This development has always been kind of a sidewalk-to-sidewalk development. What changed is we took the parking garage, which before was exposed on two sides, and now we just have it exposed on one side. So the building now wraps the parking garage on three sides. And essentially, the side that it now wraps is along Dunford Drive, which is along this side. So we have McConville up front here. We have Dun- We have Dunford, the General's Bridge in this area. And now what's done is, this was after discussions with a lot of key people in the city, was to have the residential along Dunford Drive as opposed to having an exposed parking garage. The only place where the parking garage is exposed now is actually on the backside, which is along the MBTA tracks and facing the Bourbon Parkway. So can you just flip a couple of slides ahead? Maybe one more. So this is our ground-level plan. Ground level, the entrances are still the same. So main entrance here in and out of McConville. We have a right-in and right-out off of Hannon. Reason for that is that now relocated the traffic signal down here that was always planned, we knew about it. So that was always planned as a right-in and right-out. Those are in the same location. Residential lobby in this corner. As you come into the site, you continue straight. This is actually the ramp that goes up into the parking structure. You'll see we start running sections of the residential building. This is at ground level, we have more kind of back of the house. And then this gray white area here, which is kind of another change and a new focus of the way the electric company is doing things, they're requiring us to have the transformers actually access right into the building. So we've actually had to build this area here for transformers. We had to build another area here for transformers. We do have another transformer. We've got our transformers all here before, but they are requiring more, especially with the advent of EV vehicles. And this is how we have to accommodate it at this point. The specialty grocer hasn't changed at all. Same specialty grocer. I can't say the name. As well as loading areas still here. Restaurant, bank, and surface-level parking is all the same. So the only real shift is we took this parking garage and probably the easy way now is we flip forward another slide or two. Why don't we go one more? This is the first full residential level. We have amenity up on that level. We have kind of our courtyard area, you know, above the podium. And then we have, as we run the residential down this side, we have one residential unit here. This is actually kind of dead space because we've just accommodated these large ceilings for the larger areas with the transformers. And we have another unit here. So then we kind of wrap this garage. It's in garage footprint here now. So we actually wrap it on all, on three sides. Then we put one more. Now it really starts to show the picture. These are the residential floors as we go up. So we have the residential kind of wrapping this garage on three sides. We have elevators, stairway for the garage in this corner. So that'll be kind of a prominent glass feature in that side of the building. So what happened was the garage just about to this point, now it's shifted back to here. We dropped four units, so instead of being 301, 297. The overall parking count is actually the same. The nine, it was a 997 annex, includes the surface-level parking. The garage has always been around the 800 vehicles. So we have to block the 800-vehicle garage. So that's really the shift that's occurred. We advance a whole bunch of slides until we get the renderings, make it easier to see what's actually happening. Couple more, Joe, please. Keep going. Okay, now it's time to see what actually look like. Ground level. So this is Hanover Parkway in this area, McConville here. This is our corner where we have, we can have a bank in this corner. We've kept the kind of, you know, ground-level emphasis with kind of strong materials at ground level, the residential above, specialty grocer in this area, and then our residential entrance along here. We go to the next slide, looking back. Now we have McConville here. Dunford Drive along this area as we had before. And then we've got residential going along Dunford. We've got a, we've actually got the way up to match the sidewalk. So today, if you go along the bridge, you'll see, in effect, it still shows on this side, you'll see how they have the concrete railing in between the high lesters. That was because it was a grade change here. They saw that they had a grade change here. We're actually able to remove that and we might not, much nicer sidewalk area along Dunford Drive side there. And again, this is our residential lobby. So for this one, this is just kind of close, especially the detail starts to show more materials. Another view along Dunford Drive. This is the garage entrance for people that are entering. Vehicles obviously come into the building. And then if we go to the next one, this actually helps show how we kind of mask a 10-story garage especially Ken's development. So we're actually on Bourbon Parkway now. This is one place you're going to see this garage. And then we have Hanover Parkway here. So this is right at that intersection. So this is residential. And then what happens is the building steps back and jumps up. This is actually the 10-story garage section right here. The exterior of the garage, we've kind of got these pushed windows. They'll probably look more like we were in an office building from a little bit of a distance. You know, we wanted to have a very nice facade in the garage, similar to, you know, the effect that was starting with the Kilroy garage. But in essence, we're still, you know, within zoning. It's allowed by right to 10 stories and so forth, so that all performs. But by, you know, pulling it back and squishing it, it pushed it up essentially, so. Entrance, exit's still the same. So the only real big change is shifting this garage and pushing it up a bit to accommodate it. The rest of the, you know, so-called impacts, you know, traffic, parking, all that, nothing has really changed to that. And so.
Any other questions?
Can I just have, oh, sorry.
Go right ahead. No, no question.
When you're shopping at the specialty grocer, will you have, would there be like one hour free parking at the parking lot?
No, it's free the whole time.
Oh, it's free the whole time?
Yeah, no. If you park there and you're not going to the retail, we're going to know about that. We're not going to let you park there for the day. So we'll monitor it, kind of like up at Target. I mean, we try to do it in a discreet way. But, yeah, you'll be able to park there as long as you need to for the, whether you're going to the restaurant. You know, if you go to the grocer, then you go to the restaurant, you know, you might be there for a couple hours, which is fine.
And this project's underway. You've cleared IHOP, and I see a trailer on site.
Yep, right now, removing soils, you know, utilities, things like that. But yep.
Thanks. All right.
Any other questions? Yeah, okay. I don't have any questions either. This is a public hearing, so if anybody here from the public wishing to speak on this project, sir. And while you come up, I'll just remind folks that you can sign in on the side, for, against, or neutral, I think, too. So there are sign-in sheets there. Hello?
My name is Taylor Campbell. I live at 133 Willow Street, not in the butter, but I spend a lot of time in Quincy Center. I realize this isn't the immediate subject of the request tonight, but I'm flabbergasted by the idea of adding 1,000 parking spaces in the middle of what should be a walkable, dense downtown area. I just, it's, we already have a gigantic parking garage that just went in. It was displaced several ground-level retail establishments, some restaurants that used to be there. And I realize this may not be the right meeting for this, but I'm just, this is mind-boggling. The housing is great. We need way more housing. We need, you know, a couple more zeros after the number. He hasn't, yeah, but that part's great. But 1,000 parking spaces is like, I, anyway, thank you.
Thank you.
Actually, I think I could follow up and maybe answer that. The 1,000 spaces are not just for the development. The, where our agreement works with the city for the, well, 297 apartments, we actually be, the city will actually own this parking garage. We'll have a long-term lease. We start out leasing essentially one space per unit. But we are allowed to reduce our number of spaces that we lease if we're not utilizing those spaces. We don't want to pay for spaces we're not using. The city's intent with this garage is to actually make those spaces available for other developments. So as other parcels downtown are developed, they make them available for that. There is some, there's definitely going to be a certain amount of public parking in it, very similar to the Kilroy garage for people that are going to some of the neighboring shops, restaurants, things like that. But the city's actually going to manage the parking. So unlike a lot of private developments where every development is putting in, you know, X amount of parking, it's exclusive to that development, may or may not get used once it's built. This is built in a way that the city's going to manage the parking. We have enough for our development when it opens 20 years from now. Maybe we only need 200 parking spaces. They can then take those spaces and make them available for other uses throughout the city. So it's a way to, it is a lot of parking up front, but with some of the potential developments that could occur in this area, the city can make those available to those other developments as they occur.
I could just clarify. I'm actually not, it's not the number of units for this housing that I find flabbergasting. It's just the number of parking spaces for anyone to be using in the center of, you know, the center of town, right next to the T station, right next to commuter rail, right next to how many dozen different bus lines in what, you know, is, what used to be a trolley line that went on Hancock Street many, many, many decades ago. This is, it should be focused on people walking around, not on, you know. These roads are already very unpleasant places to be. Now this is attracting even more driving to come in here. And the city should focus on walkable development downtown, not encourage more driving development downtown. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak on this project? Anyone else? Oh, sure.
Forget your name, but I call him Barcelona because he compares it to Barcelona. And I agree, Barcelona's incredible. I've never been there, but I've seen pictures. But the idea that, you know, people live above, and they shop below, and they all walk around. But that's not exactly here. But what I do see is, I see the Hanover Company. And what I, this is going to have across the street, we're going to have the new, you know, urgent care, which is going to be huge. People are going to be coming from places like Hanover, Hingham, Norwell, and they're not going to be taking public transportation. They're going to be driving to that destination. So we will, I believe we will need these parking spots. And it's going to create revenue to compensate us for these, the cost of the garage. And so I do agree with you. But at the same time, we do need the parking spots. So I see it very useful for those people from Hanover, Norwell, Hingham, all those types of places are going to. I feel like we're going to be a new destination. People aren't going to go all the way into Boston to go see their doctors. They're going to be coming to our new facility. So I can't wait for it. I keep looking at the empty spots, and I think in 10 years, it's just going to be even better. So, great stuff.
Thank you. And final call, anyone wishing to speak? Okay. Without, I think, anything else? I think we can close this public hearing.
We should close the public hearing.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
And then we can.
We have a recommendation.
Oh, you do have a recommendation?
Yep.
Okay.
We do. Thank you, Madam Chair. Throw you to the board. I'll make a few comments following up. The Quincy Center Urban Renewal Plan was adopted in 2007, and the primary strategy of that plan was to analyze the city's two parking areas, the Hancock Lot and the Ross Garage area, and envision a new, a new sort of era or a new evolution to our downtown fabric, which was, and I think we could see that with Kilroy. We built Kilroy Garage and created three new development sites where there was just a surface lot there. It, in order to build that garage, some of the new parking load from the new development went in there, but there is a larger public parking component in the Kilroy Garage. The garage you see here today, paired with the other one with the medical office, is essentially the strategy to replace the former Ross Garage. And for anyone that remembers that, that was a 40-year-old structure that was long past its life. And in replacing that Ross Garage, we've paired that with roadway improvements, with McConville Way and also the General's Bridge. And we've paired that with new high-quality private investment. We are here today on a major plan amendment as Mr. McKinnon had described, that the Urban Renewal Plan picks up on a 10% change in square footage. And there was that change in this case. I would also report to the board that this past May, the city council approved the fifth bond authorization under the Quincy Center DIF program, which provides the financing for the construction of this public garage. Since that funding was put in place, the city has developed a design team with both city consultants and city departments that is meeting regularly. And I would say more recently, they're meeting weekly or multiple times per week. I believe the current timeline has, the end of first quarter, we would have, the city would have final garage design plans to then go out and lock in, you know, the contracts needed to build that. So this is, in a way, a bit of an update of the evolution of how this project is. But I would report to this board again that the city is actively working in partnership with this developer on all of the utility work and all of the soil work. So when this change came in, we did not move it to peer review. It was not appropriate because we are acting through the Urban Renewal Plan in partnership with the developer, and the city and the departments are participating in the design. So this, with that, the department does have a recommendation to approve this change. After consideration of the site plan accompanying documents and the comments received from the city staff, the department recommends the board approve the modification to the Certificate of Consistency Planning Board Case 2024 COC-01, subject to the approved special and general conditions of the planning board decision dated February 21st, 2024, as filed with the city clerk on March 1st, 2024, to add the following additional special condition, which would be number 20, which simply states, "The applicant shall continue to adhere to all conditions of the certificate of consistency Planning Board Case 2024 COC-1 dated February 21st, 2024, and the land disposition agreement dated December 19th, 2023." That would conclude the department's recommendation.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve consistent with the recommendation?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
And then, thank you.
Thanks very much.
Thank you. And then we do have one final business meeting item, Council Order 2024-97, Amending Chapter 375, Zoning of Creation of Congregate Over 55 Housing Overlay District.
Yes, Madam Chair, to the board. The board did receive earlier a copy of a communication which essentially serves as the report on a zoning amendment, which is the regulatory responsibility of this department. And it would be addressed to the city clerk and the clerk of council. Pursuant to the provision of General Law 48, subsection 5, the city of Quincy Planning Board held a public hearing at which interested persons were given an opportunity to be heard regarding Council Order 2024-97
were given an opportunity to be heard regarding Council Order 2024-97, an ordinance amending Chapter 375 of the Quincy Zoning Code for purposes of creating a senior housing overlay district. Members John Kelly, Larry Leuzo as acting chair, Christopher Bead and PJ Foley were in attendance at the meeting, which occurred on October 16th, 2024. The board heard a presentation from the city solicitor, James Timmons, who explained the purpose of the ordinance, how the proposed amendment would impact existing code provisions, and how the ordinance would impact both the redevelopment options for the proposed district and the development impacts on the existing parcels in the district. Excuse me. The district is now zoned predominantly Residence A, with some parcels located in a Residence B district. Following the presentation by the solicitor, the board heard from members of the public who offered the following concerns. Speakers requested that consideration be given to preserving as much open space as possible on the site, including preservation of trees on the campus, which speakers referred to as an aberratum and trees of historical significance. Those both were in quotations. The high water table in the area was another, and frequent flooding were also suggested to be significant concerns. Parking in the area, which is now predominantly marked by single-family homes surrounding the existing college campus, was also a noted concern. The possibility of preserving for public use assets such as the college library and gymnasium were also mentioned. The public comments spoke to the fact that the proposed zoning ordinance, which provides for a review process regarding proposed redevelopment of the site, will be an extremely useful tool in addressing those concerns. In addition, the objective of the amendment to provide housing opportunities for senior housing that will allow for our aging population to remain in Quincy is a laudable one. For these reasons, the planning board members present, and I guess this would be if, if the, the board would choose to vote on this, you know, would, would recommend passage of the council order without offering any proposed amendments. The board does how recommend that review of the minimum lot area per dwelling unit requirement, you know, should be looked into by the council. So that would conclude the department's report at this time. Would happy to be answering any questions.
I have one question in terms of voting, since I was not present. I don't think Member Shaughnessy was present either. Do we abstain from the vote or is it because we're voting on this today?
So the, I'm not sure if the Mullins Rule would apply to a zoning amendment.
Yeah, I don't know.
Versus a special permit.
So I think just to be safe, we abstain.
Would abstain?
I mean, because then you, you still have the four, so that's.
Correct. And that would be sufficient to move the, the communication back to the city council, who will hold additional hearings on this amendment. The council will also call for a public hearing to also hear from public comments as well.
Okay. So I will call though for the vote. Is there a vote in favor?
Make a motion, we vote in favor?
I'll second that.
Okay. And then all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Ally, you, you abstain. You abstain, and so do I.
Oh, I have to abstain, okay.
Yes.
Sorry, hold on.
No, that's okay. We'll reflect that you abstain. And I think that that is everything for tonight.
Well, sure. Do it, Joe.
Yes. Thank you. Thank you.
Happy to answer.